Good evening.
Good evening.
Great-looking group tonight. I want to know how many people took the lime bike here today? How many?
None.
Alright. Alright, we're calling this meeting to order. The Town Council meeting of June 19th, 2018. We're a little behind schedule. It's beginning at 7 o'clock at the DeLeo Senior Center. This is being recorded and shown live on WCAT and will be played back at various times. We'll leave with a pledge of allegiance. Jim Leteri, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Inman.
Here.
Councilor Carroll.
President.
Councilor Christopoe.
Here.
Councilor Leteri.
Yep.
Councilor Sardo.
Here.
Councilor McDuffie.
Here.
That's President Valcory.
Here.
President Vecchia.
Here. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 15th Town Council meeting are circulated.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
The ayes have it. I'm going to suspend the schedule here and bypass the public hearing for a few seconds to take this opportunity to thank an individual who has dedicated 21, almost 22 years of public service to the town of Winthrop. I'm talking about Brian Beatty. Brian's here this evening. Brian served as a member of the Board of Appeals, Board of Appeals, and the last two terms as chairman, and he did an outstanding job in protecting the interests of the folks in his community relative to the quality of life. So at this time, I'd like Brian to come up. I'd like to present you with a citation. I don't need the citation, I'll come around and give it to you. Be it known to all that the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its congratulations to Brian Beatty in recognition of the community member or commit member of the Board of Appeals for the last 21 and a half years, the last two terms as chairman. On behalf of the residents in the town of Winthrop, we extend the most sincere congratulations to Brian and his retirement and offer to you our best wishes and good fortunes in your future endeavors. Given this 19th day of June 2018, Ron Vecchia, Town Council President, Phil Valcory, Michael McDuffie, James Leteri, Nick LaConte, Michael Serto, Lynn McCow, Peter Christopoe, and Heather Inman. Congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Town Council and the Town Council President for this. All the nice things they said, so the Board of Appeals could have gone two years without that many nice things being said about them. A lot of people like to thank first my family for not planning things on the last Thursday of the month because that was always the time we had our meetings, and especially for all the people that helped us out, all the people that I worked with during the years on the Board of Appeals, they were great. They really had the town of Winthrop really in their mind and they tried to do the best for the town. A lot of people that helped out, the building inspector, John Barrett, his crowd, Al Agui, the fire department, the chief of police, the fire department, they were great. They helped us on a lot of occasions when we were stuck and we didn't have any answers. And mostly, mostly the secretaries. The secretaries did a fantastic job of really keeping the board together. I mean, they did all the hard work, they did all the legwork, and they were sensational. If anybody who's been on a board, you know everybody depends on them to really do all the homework and to pull you through. But again, I'd like to say again, thank you very much.
Okay, we have several public hearings this evening, and we're going to start with the joint public hearing with the Planning Board, the Winthrop Town Council, but first we're going to have a presentation by Bob Carroll of the Planning Board. The two petitions we're going to be discussing this evening are petitions that were presented to us by citizens of Winthrop. All of the names were certified, and the Town Council, when we receive such petitions, we have an obligation to respond with them within a certain period of time, and that's why we're having a hearing tonight, to act on them. So you'll have an opportunity to speak. I would request that you try to keep your comments to at least three minutes, maybe less if possible. Our meetings are tending to go into the wee hours of the morning, but I would like everybody to have an opportunity to be heard, so please have a consideration for other members of the audience to speak as well. The two hearings, the first one is around no further major actions on any significant town initiatives until the new town manager and the new town planner are in place. That's the first one we're going to take up.
Well, fantastic.
And the second one is amendment to the Winthrop Code of Ordinances, which took place several
So, my name is Bob Carroll, I'm a member of the Planning Board of Winthrop.
years ago relative to the center, the mixed-use program.
I'm here with the other members of the Planning Board.
So with that, I would like to call on Bob Carroll.
What I want to share with you is a presentation that we just recently had last week at our
Bob, I'm going to give you the microphone. I understand that you want to make a presentation.
own meeting, which tries to understand some of the issues that went into the CBD zone, shed some light on the process that happened there to make these changes, and just talk a little bit about the actual zoning code, which I hope to sort of set a baseline for us all to begin our discussions in public comment, so we can just sort of separate a little bit of fact from fiction that's happening. I'll say for myself, it's been, it was a long process, and the hardest thing is hearing a little bit about the accusation that the center business district zoning was done in the cloak of darkness or, you know, behind closed doors. And so the first thing that pulled together here is a timeline, which started all the way back into 2012, when the town manager's office engaged with MAMPC, Metropolitan Area of Learning.
The council.
Yeah. I got it wrong last time, too. So anyway, and so there was a grant for technical assistance, and there was a lot of things that they did, and focusing on the center, but there was a lot of language in our code, the definitions weren't quite right, and the references weren't quite connected. So that was something that was very important to us to then get right, to make development and understanding of what was going on in the CBD easier for folks trying to get involved. And so this timeline shows 13 public meetings and workshops that took place through 2013 and 2014 until we codified these changes, or made recommendations, I should say. So at the end of those 13 meetings, the Winthrop Planning Board made recommendations to adopt some proposed changes that were recommended at the end of that process. The Town Council then took those changes, decided to accept those recommendations, and kicked them to the Rules and Ordinance Committee, which did the sort of, you know, the tough work of actually working it into our bylaw and making those very important connections through our bylaws so they were easier to understand and the intent of them were carried through. So, I think that's, that was it. So if there's any questions about that, but many of these meetings were attended, many of these were attended quite well, the workshops in particular had over 50 people there, and I just would say that the board, even if they were represented by maybe sort of pro-growth or pro-economic development, it is the Planning Board's job to always consider all the residents in Winthrop, especially the abutters when we're making changes, even if the abutters aren't necessarily there as a majority. So, I just want to start with, what is the central business district? Because that would seem to be the easiest thing to decide, but in fact, some of that is not easy. So, the first, the, one of the only official maps that you can find on the website right now is something from 2006, and it's called the Street and Zoning Plan. And, see there, there's sort of a purple zone in the middle that is now loosely defining what the CBD is. If you zoom into something, you can also find on the town website, is a draft, oops, a draft, like a draft of the central business district plan. And this, again, there are so many things we're working on right now, and the actual line of that, I must admit, wasn't one thing that we were totally focused on, and that's caused some stress for folks that are on the wrong side of the line, Miss Coffin being one of them, so apologies there. So, we have some recommendations, so I think this isn't all just our way of the highway, but I think there's obviously room for improvement. This is wonderful. So, density is talked about a lot. I hear a lot of people talking about how Winthrop is the most dense, is totally the most dense place in the world, dense place in Massachusetts, dense city, dense town, whatever. So I just wanted to explain what that is, so we all understand what we're talking about when we say density. So density is just simply, in this case, the number of people living within a given area. For us, it's the population within the square miles of Winthrop. So Winthrop's density is 9,407, so there's 9,407 people. So, what does that, what does that mean? So it's just a number, what does that mean? So you've got 18,000 people, you're dividing it by 1.98 square miles. This data, I'm trying to be as clear as possible, this data is from the 2017 US Census, so this isn't stuff I can't get up, or stuff I'm finding on Facebook. So, where does that leave us in the ranking relative to the Commonwealth? Well, Winthrop, that ninth place in the Commonwealth, right behind Revere, right in front of Arlington. Somerville, nearly, or over twice as dense as us. Chelsea, very high as well. Chelsea, Cambridge, Boston, Everett, Malden, Lawrence, Revere, then Winthrop, Arlington, Brookline, make the top 12. And I think what's important to point out here is some of the more dense communities above us on the chart are desirable communities, and density is not necessarily the level here. Bad planning, bad design, bad urban form is the level, and that's what we need to look at. So, historically, we look at where we fall at the 9,400 density mark. It's not even as dense as we've ever been. We've been much more dense in the 60s and 70s. Again, this is from US Census data on the US Census reading page. So we are, we dipped down in the 90s to 9,000, we were obviously less than 1,900 with 3,000. But we're coming back a little bit on a curve now at 2017 from 2010. Is there any questions on density?
Is that referring to citizens overall, or is that adults, voters? What is that?
Population, pure population, everybody.
So the baby?
Babies and grandpas.
Babies, yeah. So the baby boom era was that bulge?
Yeah. So, the other issue, um, it's short to me, was it a late presentation or a long presentation? No, yeah, sorry. So, parking is something that comes up with every project in front of us, and is one of the topics that is going to come before you in this petition. So just look at that a little bit. So, in the CBD for mixed-use projects, which most of them are, it is a requirement for 0.75 parking spots per studio or one-bedroom unit, and 1.25 parking spaces per two-bedroom unit in the CBD. That's part of the code. The other issue that came up when we were talking about this was fees in lieu of parking. It's a way to stimulate growth and allow municipalities to collect funds from potential developers and put them in view towards making improvements in parking, whether it's making more parking or simply managing it better through signage or other means. And so that right now is set at $2,000, but I think another move for improvement in explaining kind of how that should be implemented, who's in charge of it, what are the goals there, and we had some recommendations that came out of the master plan. So, a few things that came out of the master plan, which was after all these changes that were made to the zoning about in 2016, is to say that the average, so these were field observations done by the consulting group that's helping the town, the MAMPC, and they observed that the occupancy observed for on-street parking was at about 48 percent. And they did this, I think they tested four different times, yeah, four different times, including a Friday night, and it's sort of, you could argue. And, so the average occupancy observed in municipal parking lots was down 34 percent, and public parking on an average is 46. And, so the average occupancy observed in private parking tricky. So, Winthrop, the conclusion of the observations was Winthrop Center's occupancy levels were well below a design target. If you were going to make Winthrop Center from scratch, the design target would be about an 85 percent occupancy. Doesn't mean your favorite parking spot is always going to be open. It just means that, in general, we're using about half the capacity of our parking. So, MAMPC also provided us with some good recommendations on how to improve the pedestrian environment, by making the crosswalk shorter, and some of these things that you're seeing kind of come out of, make the way into the utility plan, and some of the landscape improvements that was suggested there. Increase consistency of on-street parking regulation. The signage is terrible, you don't know how long you can stay, often you can stay all day, but some of this is a management issue. Like, we don't, if we're a business owner, we don't want employees to park in front of our own business or in front of someone else's, some of that's going on. So, some of these things are kind of self-inflicted, I would say. I thought this one, it's a little hard to see here with the color, but not so much. But just to give someone the perspective, a little bit about travel distance from parking spots to places that they go. So this is an aerial photograph of Targeted Revere. I think we've all been there, used once or twice probably today. But, when we go there, and often when I go there, it's on Saturday, I end up parking kind of in the middle of the parking lot, and it's about 400 so feet from where I park to the front door, let alone to the Chalmers Department or anything in the back. If I, at the same scale, look at Winthrop Center with that same arrow, I'm able to park from that new lot that's over next to PDU and walk all the way to the front door or CPS, not even more than that. Or park in the municipal lot that's next to the bank and walk to the Center of North Square, the same distance as you'd walk from the middle of the Targeted Parking Lot to the front door of Targeted. So, another issue that came up was height, and whether height should be pulled back a little bit. Want to talk about what's in the zoning code right now for height. So, the, basically shows up on your maximum stories, and the key here is that there are two dimensions. There's two and a half stories for 35 feet, or four stories and 48 feet. The key is in the details of the footnotes. So footnote, can't read this, footnote 14, says that you're limited to two and a half stories or 35 feet adjacent to a residential district, and four stories and 48 feet otherwise. So this, to be clear, I'm going to use La Siesta as an example. La Siesta abuts a residential lot. So, La Siesta, if they ever did want to expand height, they would be limited to two and a half stories or 35 feet. Those are the same limitations that you would have if a residence was in the middle of a residential area, your neighbor would have the maximum height limitation, two and a half stories and 35 feet. So, just to say that there, this is a protection, because the Planning Board was trying to think of those abutters, there's a protection built in already on the edge of the CBD. Setbacks on that same chart, they said. Yeah, and the petition, let me go back just for one second. Just to be clear, the two and a half and 35 feet was what it was before, and the four and 48 feet in the center of the central business district is something that was changed to encourage more development, more, you know, units on top, either residential or commercial units. And, the petition in front of us is for just two stories. So it would be more restrictive than it was in 2014, or previous to 2014. Setbacks on that same chart within the zoning, the current zoning, raised down setbacks by front yard, side yard, and rear yard. And just like the height, there are footnotes that help protect residential or abutters. And the two footnotes here that are important are the side yard, which basically says, no side yard requirement for a commercial or mixed-use structure, this is really difficult. Yeah, no side yard requirement for commercials or mixed-use structure except for a commercial lot abutting a residential district. And when it does abut a residential district, it is, may be reduced by 10 feet, oh, sorry, that's a bit back here. So, basically saying that you have a 10-foot side yard setback generally, if you're next to a residential district. If you are between two other commercial establishments, like we see already down there, zero setback. So, the other piece of this is the, in the front yard, again, literally designed, zero front yard setback. We want those buildings and businesses right up to the street, glassy, see what's in there, see what's going on. Rear setback, that's footnote 12, and footnote 12 may be reduced to 10 feet. Typically, it's 15 feet on the rear setback, but it can be reduced to 10 feet, subject to Planning Board review, so command review by us, and unless abutting a residential district. So that is also to say that that protection cannot be weakened or shortened by the Planning Board if it's next to residential. So, most of the protections that we had in place there, that is it? Oh, yes, so the petition that you have in front of you is, let me go back for a second, asking for a side yard setback that is not 10 feet, but is in fact 50 feet, and a rear yard setback that is not 15 feet, but 50 feet. And knowing, how you know the central business district with the very small kind of lots that we have there, it may be very difficult to achieve any sort of building if you try to maintain both those 50 feet is going to wipe you out for three-quarters, if not all of the other, of the spaces down. So, that's it for me, and I'll hand it back over to you.
Mr. Carroll, I'm having some trouble wrapping my head around exactly what is a setback? What do you mean when you say that, that how far someone's side yard can be from the neighboring structure or structure? What exactly does that mean?
Yeah, sorry. I just assume most people are architects in the world, but. So, setbacks are how far in feet you have to be away from your property lines, and they're set front, side, and rear. Sides are usually stretchable, so you only have to say that it's not like a left side and a right side. So, in the central business district, the property line in most cases is probably right to the sidewalk, and it allows you to be zero feet from that, I can think of almost all the businesses in the center, stores right up to the front, HomeCon, La Siesta, Black Street, right up to the front. Side yard, again, it makes more sense in a residential context, that's how far you are away from your fence on the side, and your neighbor is also the same, so you have some buffer between. In a, in a commercial setting, you don't need that. There's party walls between them, and they sort of block way up against each other. So if you're in the center of the central business district, not near any residential, you can go to zero, as long as we do that, make sure that you're at, as long as you're free to back as a Planning Board, and the rear yard same way, 15 feet back from the property line. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Would you like to join us again? No, of course. You can turn it off. But, if you want to leave, it may be useful for me. Okay, for the sake of the folks that not actually see the petition, on the first hearing that we're discussing this evening, which is no further major actions on a significant town initiative until the new town manager and town planner are onboard, I'm going to actually read the petition, and then I'll open it up to comments. That the Town Council takes no further major action on significant town initiatives until a new permanent town manager and town planner are in place. Major actions would include determining the future use of the middle school site, advancing the center utilities project, making any zoning changes, and implementing the recent or any further water and sewer rate increases. The Town Council commits to a thorough and transparent coverage process and scheduling for the selection of a permanent town manager and town planner. This process shall include significant citizens' input, not limited to the planning advisory committee. And on that note, before we open it up, I would, I'm very happy to announce that the Town Manager Search Committee has made a recommendation to the Chair, and I informed each member of the Council. We have three candidates that will be publicly interviewed by the Council, hopefully within the next week or so. We're in the process of coming up with a schedule. The first one is Austin Faison, which is, he's currently serving as Assistant Town Administrator in the town of Brookline. Tim Gordon, currently serving as Town Administrator for the town of Holbrook, and Michael Lombardo, currently serving as a Town Manager in the town of Hamilton. So, there'll be more information available on this shortly. With that, I will open up this hearing to the public. Does anybody wish to be heard? Yes.
Okay, one email, you mentioned.
Give the microphone, identify yourself.
Okay, first of all, you need to identify yourself, that's number one. And the first hearing is on, and Joe, are you going to come up? You want to make a statement? Joe? Okay, for the sake of the folks that not actually see the petition, on the first hearing that we're discussing this evening, which is no further major actions on a significant town initiative concerning town manager and town planner or on board, I'm going to actually read the petition and then I'll open it up to comments. That the town council takes no further major action on significant town initiatives until a new permanent town manager and town planner are in place. Major actions would include determining the future use of the middle school site, advancing the center utilities project, making any zoning changes, and implementing the recent or any further water and sewer rate increases. The town council commit to a thorough and transparent coverage process and schedule for the selection of a permanent town manager and town planner. This process shall include significant citizens' input, not limited to the planning advisory committee. And on that note, before we open it up, I would, I'm very happy to announce that the town manager search committee has made a recommendation to the chair, and I informed each member of the council. We have three candidates that will be publicly interviewed by the council, hopefully within the next week or so. We're in the process of coming up with a schedule. Now, the first one is Austin Faison, which is, he's currently serving as assistant town administrator in the town of Brookline. Tim Gordon, currently serving as town administrator for the town of Holbrook, and Michael Lombardo, currently serving as a town manager in the town of Hamilton. So there'll be more information available on this shortly. With that, I will open up this hearing to the public. Does anybody wish to be heard? Yes.
Okay. One email, you mentioned.
Identify yourself.
Okay, first of all, you need to identify yourself, that's number one. And the first hearing is on, and Joe, are you going to come up? You want to make a statement? Joe is going to make a statement, what the petition is about, and any comments should be strictly on this public hearing, not the one in the zoning of the center. That's the next hearing that we'll take. Joe? This is, the first hearing is on whether or not we're going to freeze any further hiring or...
So can't comment on what you said, is that okay?
Not now, not yet, the next hearing. Thank you. Joe?
Sorry for the confusion. I want to speak in favor of the freeze petition that is before you. As you know, the town former government is a very strong town manager. Town managers usually are here on long-term contracts, and therefore they have to be accountable over the long term to the performance of the various town departments. We have a number of initiatives before you that are extraordinarily expensive, extraordinarily complicated. We really have one shot at getting them right. And my view is, I would rather see permanent, stable executive leadership, which you're about to make a selection on, let them have their people in place, revisit where we are on the utilities project. I think we heard an acknowledgement that the zoning that was done was, it's a really terrific job, but there does need to be some tinkering with. There will be some legal issues that will get raised, and I'm just trying to urge patience and getting in the new leadership for this town that you're about to put into place, and let them then bring all these initiatives up before the public again so we can see them transparently, and then have an executive team that then is accountable over the long term for good implementation of all these initiatives. So, thank you, I spoke in favor of...
Anyone else wish to be heard? Nobody else wish to be heard? All right, let's, gentleman in the back here. Please state your name.
Hi, Paul Serto, Precinct 5. I just have a question on the petition. Should it pass, does that rescind your vote on keeping the rank out of the middle school project? That's my only question.
I just want to, I want to thank Joe Aiello and Lisa Albergini for all their hard work on this. I think that the two of them, out of anybody in this room, I think have the most authority on sort of the situation that we're in, and I'd like to support, support the petition to freeze all activities until we have a town manager in place. I worked for the Somerville, the Somerville Planning Department for a long time, and they've been able to accomplish extraordinary things, but they have a 50-person planning department. So for a town of our size to have none and to be making decisions like this can be a really, really scary thing. So I'd encourage everybody just to stop and, and let's get, let's get our team in place before we do anything.
Lisa Albergini, Precinct 6. I would just like to echo what the two prior speakers said. We are really in the process right now of doing, I think, a great job trying to get our house in order, a good process in hiring a new town manager. Clearly, that person, as Joe stated, is going to be responsible for some really extraordinary, complicated and important key initiatives in town. So I would strongly urge the council to adopt the petition that does put a freeze on any major actions relative to the zoning, the CBD infrastructure, the middle school, just as Council President Vecchia read. So I would just ask and urge that the council vote in favor of that petition to freeze the activity until we've got a town manager in place. Thank you.
Ready?
Dottie Denofre, Precinct 4. I have a question, if I may. When we had the presentation back in April, I was under the impression that that monies that we received from Governor Baker, that check at that time, that was supposed to be earmarked for the business district. If we put a freeze, I admire the idea of a freeze as far as waiting for a new town manager, with all due respect to you, sir, that would have somewhat of a strong planning background, as we said, a combination thereof. In the meantime, I don't know whether or not we should freeze the thoughts, the suggestions, the research, and all of that in preparation so that we can meet the new person or persons and the board can meet with them and the planning board. The reason I thought of this is because I'm out looking to get my rug shampooed. And now what am I doing? I'm pricing that. So I think the onus of responsibility is, maybe we need a price tag on a lot of these grandiose ideas, even though necessarily you're not going to go ahead and, and execute them. But at least you've got something strong to bring to the table so it can be whittled away at or built upon.
Thank you, Dottie.
Can you tell me about the money? The check that the governor stood there over a hole in French Square and presented it?
We still have the money.
So it's not a check? Just a quick question. I'm in candidates, I couldn't name you so well, about managers, managers. Was it from a water company? I heard Brookline, I heard...
Hamilton, Hamilton, Brookline.
Holbrook.
Holbrook.
Okay, so Holbrook, Brookline, and Hamilton. Okay, he out, he out, he out, he out in December, a lot. I just wanted to point that out because we are...
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Final call. Anyone from the council like to be heard? Anyone from the planning board? Oh, wait a minute.
Just a comment. Just a comment on this. If this was to pass, I know over the last week maybe, there were some test holes being dug on sidewalks in the center. Would this cease any activity at all with the potential, I don't know, Stephen Dell's, with the potential infrastructure project?
I'll call on the town manager.
Really, I'll take direction from Council of Licenses. So what's your interpretation? You mean that the motion would be, now that we decided to contract it, you're, since getting pricing here, so that's, what is...
Any other questions? Anyone from the, from you would like to make the comment? Okay. This portion will be...
Let me turn it over to Ted.
Okay, speaker.
All right. I'm just, I'm turning it over to Ted, because we are, have already started with this town manager doing some testing. And that testing has to be done no matter what the project has done, and he's going forward with that, and I think we should continue to go forward with that. We should continue to get pricing, and we should move forward. Also, your petition has two facts to it. They say a town manager and a planner. There is no planner on the scope right now. So I have to vote against the petition as it stands, because I think we have to start moving forward on some of these projects. And I think we have capability with the enter, the permanent town manager we have now, with the new one coming in, and with a pot that's going to be there. There is no full-time planner yet, and I don't think there's going to be one for many months. So I think I have to vote against stopping everything right now as the petition leaves.
Do you want to state a vote coming after this, or are we just taking this under advisement?
We can take it under advisement. Yes.
Did you want us to read our recommendation?
Yes, absolutely.
Want me to stand?
Move the agenda. David Statio, Chair of the Planning Board, will read their recommendations.
Thank you, Council President Vecchia. Everybody hear me?
No.
No? Can you go out?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I'm too tall for this. All right. As Council President Vecchia had stated, the planning board had a meeting on June 11th in which we took public comments, and Mr. Carroll had given the same presentation on that evening as he did tonight. We took comment from approximately 12 citizens that night, and then we drafted a recommendation to the town council. That recommendation included that the first thing that the town should do is to post an accurate and updated center business zoning map, which clearly defines the exact location of the district, the legal boundaries of the district, the lot lines and the numbers of the district, areas and boundaries of the district that said map shall be uploaded and made available to the town's website. That was our first recommendation. The second recommendation to the town council for the town of Winter was that we felt as though that the town should seek professional guidance regarding the amending of 17.50.210. That is the parking fines and fees section of the town of Winter's bylaws. We thought it would be wise to have a professional individual look into the $2,000 cost for buying back parking spots that a developer could do in the event that he or she had less parking spots than the zoning required. The third recommendation that the planning board made was that the town council should take no further action of any significant initiative until the town manager is in place. Significant initiatives shall include the middle school site, advancing center utilities projects, and making any further changes to the center business district zoning. We did address the question of a planner. I don't want to speak for the board, but I felt as though that myself and I would say the majority of the board, we knew that the planner was something that we may not be able to afford at this moment. So what we did on our fourth recommendation is that we strongly suggested that the town find the money or really, really consider the necessity of a planner. So that was our fourth recommendation. I submitted that in writing to the town council this Monday.
Can we go back to the beginning of the meeting and take a vote call with the members of the planning board? Okay?
Mark Carroll.
Yes.
Vinnie Sula.
Yes.
Gina Demento.
Yes.
Chris Voits.
Yes.
Dave Statio.
Yes.
Anna Merceret. Dave Spockdo. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Just, I'd like to go back to the question that we were discussing relative to the borings that are going on in the center and whether that's considered a huge undertaking. If you look at the original costs that were plugged into the original proposal down in the center, it was like $900,000 that were put aside in case they came across any problems with the soil, because we've had old gas stations in the center going back many, many, many years. Basically, what they're doing with the borings was spending much less money finding out beforehand. So in reality, in the end, our costs may go down. I don't know exactly what the, the contract is, but basically they're going, they're going in the center, boring and putting monitors in to monitor the soil, to see if there's any old gasoline or oils or anything of hazardous substance. So I think that's a positive move to be done now, even prior to the project, even if it's a year or two down the road. Any further comments or discussions? Yes?
I hear that you have no money here, say now, so...
Can you come forward, please, Lois? Thank you.
I understand that you have no money for a town plan, but maybe one of the recommendations would be, I mean, for a town plan, the town manager have a back, strong background in town planning.
Good point, good point. And I, you've got to understand that the town council vote, took a vote to vote for a town planner. So it wasn't in the budget last year, it didn't meet, you know, the budget at that particular point in time. I think the vote was taken the same night we got the budget presented to us. Originally, we had on the agenda this evening a vote for a town planner to find the funds. We've met on, decided to hold off on it until this happens, until we get a new town manager and go through the process. Obviously, we'll be well into the new budget process. It'll cost us a little less because we're, we're already into our year by a couple of months. So it is on the radar screen. We think it's important. Yes?
Dottie Denofre, Precinct 4, again. You mentioned budgets, and I'm asking, back last week, the free East Boston...
Yep. I hope everybody else can.
I'm sorry.
Don't be afraid, Dottie. You've never been afraid.
Don't be, I'm not afraid, honey. No, seriously, you mentioned about budgets, and last week's East Boston free times, they had a breakdown, a complete breakdown of the Senate, and they outlined all of the various proposed monies, which Winter was being earmarked in a large amount of different monies. The House, back in April, I believe, they presented their first budget. Now, my question is, does anybody know, the House had the budget in April, here we are in June, the Senate has proposed this budget, which Winter has a good chunk of monies coming to it. Has that budget passed, or is that still, because I believe it's June 30th that has to be signed off on the state?
Something like that. I, I thought it's July 30th. I think the whole process of the budget, Dottie, we, we track what's going on in the legislature. You know, there's three different numbers we look at. We look at the governor's number, the Senate's number, and the House's number. We try to take the most conservative number as, as an estimate of what we're going to get, hoping that we're wrong and that we'll get more. So it's something that is part of the budget process. You know, over a 14-week period, we, we have various meetings, you know, the, the Finance Commission holds public hearings, and during all of this, we have our ears and eyes to the State House, so in hopes that we're going to...
Again, though, my question, we're all aware of the ears and the eyes, and we're watching very closely, and it's an election year also. So what I'm thinking is, anybody got a little bit of a fix of how that, that budget now, from the House to the Senate to the floor of the vote? Does anybody have? Come on, Peter, you, I trust you have a little more background.
I'll call on the town manager, Dave Pressner.
Thank you.
Right now, the project is heading to a conference committee, which is something that more than happens on a yearly basis, and they have to sort out the differences between the House and Senate versions. Then it gets adopted, and it goes up to the governor, who has a track record of vetoing certain earbuds. So I generally take the approach is that until the governor is done with budget, you know, I don't count chickens, that, you know, may not hatch. So that's the approach I take. In terms of June 30th is the end of the fiscal year, generally legislature passes per year continuing budget resolutions, which allows them to keep operating for the next fiscal year based on the prior fiscal year until such time as the budget is formally done.
So taking the conservative road, and if we were fortunate enough to see that increase from the 4.2 to the 4.4 mil in one of the categories, and then a few others that are listed here that are public, is that an opportunity to give you a little bit of wiggle room as far as maybe talking about putting out a job description and a planner?
Absolutely.
Okay, well...
It's a work in progress. Jack?
Thank you, Jack. I suppose you've spent $10 million on our project down in Center. I did use a small percentage of that money to hire a planner.
Thanks, Jack. Anyone else wish to be heard? Councillors? Anybody? I'll close this portion of the hearing. The next hearing is on a petition, and I'm going to read, this is very technical, but I'll ask for one of the proponents to come up and make a translation in a few seconds. It's basically amending the Winter Code of Ordinances, appendix to Chapter 17-16 Table of Dimensional Regulations. 16 table of dimensional regulations, center business district, to A, maximum density, one residential unit per 2,000 square feet, B, side and rear 50 feet from any residential district, C, maximum number of stories, two. Second amendment, chapter 17 dash 50 point two one zero, A, two spaces for every unit, B, delete 17 point 50 point 210, C, and D. So with that, I'll open it up to the proponent that signed the petition, Mr. Tom Riley.
You could indulge me just a minute, but there's another matter I'd like to just discuss for briefly before we begin. Unfortunately, the state of our discord and our ability to handle matters of local government in a normal and intelligent fashion haven't, haven't been, aren't always accepted very well by every member of the public. I hope that we were able to do that right now, but I want people to hear an example of it. I think when you get through it, this, you hear that it proves two axioms. First one is, it's better to be thought an idiot than open your mouth and to remove all doubt. Second one would be, brains aren't everything, but for some people, they're nothing. I received a phone call Saturday afternoon, and the person made it clear that he had extremely displeased with my advocacy of a change in the winter zoning. Indicated that I would, I'd be in the hospital very soon if I continued to advocate in that fashion. I invited him over to my house for a discussion, but he declined my offer, and I hung up. He called back immediately after that. I, of course, didn't answer, but he left a message on my message machine. He called back a second time and left another message. So I want to play the messages for you, because I think the best, the best way to take care of somebody like that is to plug them out in public and let people understand and hear what they, what they've done. Now, I'm going to try, and I hope if I don't get to do that, I apologize ahead of time, but I do want to try and see if I can bleep out the obscenity that he could, that happens in the other one. If I don't catch it, I'm awfully sorry, I tried to do it, and I'll let you, fill you in on what it was. But just go ahead. This is the, this is the, this is the message. So I was going to pick up the phone and tell him we obviously have the wrong number. Goofball lives two blocks over. So the message was, you're on ice, keep it up, and you'll be in the hospital before you can say, Tom, you're on ice. It may happen tomorrow, the next day, maybe in a year from now. So anyway, I, I just thought that-
Is it voice there?
No, they're, we're, we've been, they've been very helpful. We've been talking to them extensively over the last few days, and they're-
Is he going to come to the next meeting?
I, I doubt it. I doubt it. I, I don't think he'd be able to associate with normal people and good people like that are in this room right now. Let me go over the petition briefly.
Please do.
The, the, what the petition does is ask, asks to make changes in five areas. The first is to establish a density standard in the center business district. Right now, there isn't any. In other parts of the town where there's zoning, we talk about how many units can be built depending upon the number of square feet on a lot. So it's 2,000 square feet. So if you had a 50,000 square foot lot and you're building under that, obviously you'd have 25 units. Center business district doesn't contain any limit on, on, on the density for multi-unit buildings. The, the side and rear, yeah, what we're asking is a change for, for residential properties, not for all the properties in the center, but if a multi-unit structure built in the center butts a business district, we're proposing a 50 square, a 50-foot limit. That's the same as it is in every other town. This isn't for structures inside the business district. It's strictly for those that are butting residential district. The other one is the limit of four stories. We think four stories is out of line with the, with the center, that the two-story, most of the buildings down there are one-story or two-stories. To put four-story buildings there are completely out of character with the rest of the center. Now, if they were scattered, there was one here, one here, and one here, I think it just creates a hodgepodge, it doesn't really lend itself, lend itself to a, to a clear, and enhance, doesn't enhance the rest of the, the neighbors. Apart from the fact, there were many meetings, okay? Now, I don't think it's productive for us to argue whether or not there were sufficient number of meetings, if people were notified, or if people should have known and shown up. The fact is that the neighbors don't feel that they had adequate involvement. Now, you may, if somebody may make the argument that that's not necessarily correct, but I can guarantee you, that's the way people feel. So what happened? 2014 has passed. Nothing, nobody got excited, nobody heard anything. And a banner went up in the center, 20 units, 10,000 square feet of parking on a 15, 10,000 square feet of commercial space in a 15,000 square foot lot. So we've made numerous presentations, people have come to lots of meetings, and then there was a decision made to choose the petition that's, that's available under the charter provisions in the hopes of getting a favorable change and a voice. The parking, parking is probably one of the more, the more difficult things. Three-quarters of a space per unit is just inadequate. Now, an example, if someone built a multi-unit building next to a two-family house, their standard for that, for that multi-unit property is three-quarters of a space. The adjacent two-family, it's, it's a requirement of two spaces for each unit or four. I don't see any reason why you have, there'd be, what would justify a parking requirement of two spaces per unit for one building, and in the adjacent building, it's three-quarters of a space for each unit. The $2,000 buyback, where someone can get out of, of any and all parking requirements, as inadequate as the three-quarters of a space is, they can get out completely by simply paying the town $2,000 per square foot. And that's a right under the zoning law. It's not, it's not, it's not under the discretion of the planning board, it's not up to any, any other board to allow it. It's the right of the, of the developer. The developer can, can utilize this to be out of their- So I just wanted to get over the overview of it. I, I don't expect that we're going to come to a conclusion on this issue tonight. If you, if you adopt the first motion that's before you, we would preclude doing that. And I don't think we have to take a look at these things being necessarily in conflict. I think we can certainly spend some time, open up a process, have some discussion, talk about what's appropriate for the center, what's right, what's wrong, what, what, what protection should be and could be in place for the, for the residents, and how we can avoid, how we can handle this thing and come forward in the future. So with that, I'd like to just hear from anybody else and have-
Thank you, Tom.
Michael Box.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jean Coughlin, Precinct Five, a neighbor of Mr. Riley's, and I just have to say, that sickens me, what we heard tonight, and for someone that's so concerned, caring, and such a good example in our town, that there's just no room for that threat or anything like that. So it is upsetting. I do want to take the time to thank the planning board for last week's meeting, the June 11th meeting, for listening to the concerns that, you know, I know I'm repetitive in bringing up. But I want to thank Mr. Carroll for the nice demonstration tonight, and I do notice, and I feel a little bit better. I know that the colorful map is out of the presentation that we saw the other night that provoked a lot of discussion, about that's how I found out from these maps that my house didn't in fact sit in the center business district unbeknownst to myself or Rosina or Mrs. Bacos. Few of us are in it on that old map. So I'm happy that they're going to reconsider and look at it and draw lines. People tell me they mean nothing, but it doesn't make us feel any better. The people that sit in those houses, that lines are behind, okay? Because it scares me. And so I think that that's great, and I want to thank you for that. Parking, Mr. Riley touched on that. It's an issue everywhere, I know that. It's never enough. Our petition to scale back and downsize is just, it's scary to think of 48 feet or what they could get around. So I just want to ask you all to protect us as residents that have been paying taxes for a long time, that have been good citizens in this town. And I've got my answer back in January from former town manager Delahanti from K and P Law, that they looked at it, they assure me that no one can go more than 35 feet, two and a half stories, the whole thing. What does scare me a little bit is when we talk about front, back, side. I don't think there's any plans yet in for these buildings, the old Family Dollar or the building next to me that sits on my property line. So it scares me when you talk about setting back and, and my concern is, I know there's no plans in yet, I don't think so. I check periodically, and they tell me no. But someone up on a window, and that caused a lot of panic, and that's the, the way we found out. So my concern is that where's the front? Where's the back? Where's the side? You know, how do things change like that? Okay? The other thing I do want to say is, I know that there were meetings, you know, they tell me there were meetings. I, you've been on this probably for about a year. I was at a parking study when I found out about it. So I have tried to be involved over the years, but what I will say is, I don't think it was done in a neighborly way. We asked why abutters weren't no, and I have a letter from Carla Vitale saying there was no list of abutters. So I'm thinking, well, what am I? I don't know what I am then. We do exist, and we just were not acknowledged or not incorporated or encouraged to be there. So now that we have found out, I think it's been a mission of mine and many other people's. We did go to other meetings where there was, I think it was at a planning board meeting, Mr. Cipuleta presented proposed plans, and I do think that you all do a terrific job, every one of you. You did tell him to leave, come back, because the plans that were presented in front of you were different than what he was presenting that night. So it totally wasn't, told him to go back to the drawing board and reappear. We've never seen that surface again. But that night, the planning board did ask him, could you have some neighborhood meetings, please? And he said, absolutely. That never happened. Then I went to a town council meeting a couple of months later, two months later, actually, and the very nice woman, Mary, who was the planner for the town, just on a weekly contract, few hours, she encouraged the same thing. She listened to us, and she said, could you please have some neighborly meetings? You know, just, I encourage you to talk to the neighbors. And that never happened again. Okay? So I just want to say, we're there to talk and to listen, and we want to be part of this process. We know it will happen, but we want it done in a conducive, conductive, respectful way, not what we heard tonight. So I, just one more comment on the last petition is, when I was at the planning board meeting on June 11th, Mr. Mento made a really good suggestion. She said, go ahead with the town manager. You may have, she wanted to make it two separate items. We need a town planner, but there's no money in the budget. So to rather than put everything on hold, which, that will happen if the town planner's included in with the town manager hiring, you're just going to hold everything up, right? That you want to move along with. So you've got to give the town manager some power, I guess, and not hold him off with a planner, too. But I will tell you, the new town planner, I know this gentleman tonight, I don't know you well, but I know the last two meetings I've seen you at, I found town manager Delahanti fought and did get me some answers, but now he's gone, we have a new gentleman, and now we're going to have another new person. So somebody, I forget who made the suggestion, that we need to bring them abreast of everything that's happened, so that we can all have a good feel and have things done in a positive, productive way. And that's all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very much.
Recognize, councilor.
Yes.
Can you use my phone, please?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yes, first, I just wanted to say that I was shocked to hear what Mr. Riley played, and wanted to apologize on behalf of the community for receiving a phone call like that from someone who has no place for that behavior in town.
I was putting it off, it's human.
I don't find it that funny. The, the second piece I wanted to mention is that I just wanted to recuse myself from any discussion and vote for the center business district as a, for the zoning, as a business owner. And I, I want everybody to, you know, sort of remove all doubt from that. And you have some great representation up here, both professionally with the planning board and the council, to guide that conversation and make sure that we make the right decision for the community. So I just want everyone to know that I'm recusing myself, so if you have questions, I won't be answering.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else wish to be here?
My name is John E. I live in Precinct One. I don't really have a comment on the development, but I do have a comment on what I heard this evening. And I suggest that what Mr. Riley said maybe is a good idea, that this can be, and I think personally should be, worked out, so that we can get something, it'll never be 100%, but some consensus. I think the first step to that, and that's why I stepped up, you need to get some agreement on the facts. I've heard tonight, I think it's one and a half spaces for a single bedroom is the zoning. I heard a lady say, Ms. Coughlin, I think, that it's point seven five. My most recent look at the zoning is that, which was two days ago, I wanted to look at the modified zoning, I hadn't looked at it, but it said 7.5. I may misread this, but you've got to have some consensus on the basis of what this is. I can go on with four or other, four or more of things where we have disagreements, the parking, for instance. We have plenty of parking on one side, but the residents say there is very little. If I lived on those streets adjacent to the center, I would say there's not a lot of parking. I look at the center, and we have overnight spaces available. What is it, 48%? Well, that comes from the Metropolitan Planning Council. They included private parking spaces, curbage parking lot way up on, by Town Hall, CBS, Michael's Wall. All those people will tell you, including, they even included Coggy Annals, they will tell you, they don't want you to park there. The owner of Michael's Wall calls almost daily to Town Hall to complain about people parking in his lot. We need a real figure on what the available overnight parking is, from some kind of accurate count that everybody can agree that- count that everybody can agree that this is representative. These are just two items where there's disagreements on facts. I think if we get common facts and reasonable discussion, and everybody in this room is reasonable, we can get a consensus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Donna Segretti, Riley, Precinct 5. First of all, I'd like to thank the Town Council and the Planning Board for coming together and affording the townspeople and the residents the opportunity to share their feelings and, and facts and ideas on the Center Business District development. First of all, on a good note, I did learn from Mr. Carroll that the, this standard, as far as height goes, it was 2.5 stories prior to the 2014. And I stand corrected on that. I thought, I thought it was two stories. So, I've learned something from that. So, height-wise, relative to the residence, next to a residential, that's still, still 2.5 stories. And I'd also like to say that, in general, looking at a bigger picture here, we're looking at rising population in the state and in the country, coupled with increased traffic and a need for the higher population to live someplace. So, the issues of population, housing, and traffic are all interconnected. And Julia...
Wallace.
Wallace, thank you so much. Connecting me with Andre LaRue, who's Executive Director of the Mass Smart Growth Alliance in Boston. And it's nice to know that there is a team working on these issues statewide. So, we're not alone here in Winthrop. Everybody's been encouraged to try to increase housing and, you know, spaces for people to live. However, at last Monday's Planning Board meeting, Phil Lundberg did point out that the eight communities ahead of Winthrop relative to density were cities, were major cities. And Winthrop still stands as, as the most dense town. I moved to Winthrop several years ago when I married my husband, and because of Santa on the fire truck, decided to stay. But I didn't choose Somerville. I don't want to live in Somerville. I've been to Somerville, and I really want to try to maintain the, the down-home character of, of Winthrop. I did send the Council and the Planning Board emails and a letter indicating my, my thoughts on, on, on these things. And I, I don't want to go into detail about the density and setbacks, and the height, and the parking. However, I do need to say something about parking, and that's after the meeting last Monday night. There was nothing going on in the center, and I was trying to park. And I, it was 9:30 at night, and both sides of my street on the center end of Cottage Park Road were full. So, I said, "Oh, wait, maybe there's something up at the top." Because a lot of times, the people at the top will park at the bottom, people in the bottom will look for something at the top, depending. And, and I'm a walker, I don't mind, I don't mind. I'm not one of these people who say, "I have to have the spot right in front of my house." So, I went around twice, and I realized, you know, that straight down to the center, except for the 10 feet away from the fire hydrant, there were no spots to be had. So, that, I think that's because we, on that side of Cottage Park Parkway Road, there are 20 houses that are two families, with the exception of two small, single families. And there, you know, in my estimation and count, we find that there's like three to five cars per house with those two families. So, I think, and some of the discussion this evening relative to parking was parking management and signage, which I think, you know, is something to be worked on. I'd just like to close with the last two paragraphs that I wrote to the Council. Relative to the Center Business Development, we just ask the development fellow, follow the historic zoning patterns of other developments in town. We are not obstructionist. We would welcome some tasteful development of the properties at the corner of Somerset Ave and Cottage Park Road. Those buildings are not in good shape. In fact, I've just taken aside, the infrastructure hasn't been discussed tonight, and what's under the streets is very concerning to me because of what Mark Wallace and Paul Lozardo said at the last big forum. We're in trouble there, and I think we have to, you know, deal with that infrastructure issue. But finally, we only ask that such developments respect the needs and comfort levels of adjacent residents and existing small businesses in the center neighborhood. Working together with residents, businesses, and town officials, I know that we can develop tax-generating projects that all of us can support and live with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Don.
Richard Dimes, Precinct 4. Ladies and gentlemen, I probably am the only selectman that goes back to the days when we built the first multi-dwelling in this community, as you see all over the place. It was hard, but the people got behind us, and as you see, as you ride around the town, we spread out the areas. I am 100% of everything that was presented here tonight, you're in the right direction. My only comment was, we still have an empty school down there, a middle school. And I think that the obligation of your governing body is you've got to bring your attention to that school, and if there's any possible way, that you can get interest in someone wanting to develop, you should go ahead with it, even though it might be under the way it was voted here tonight, I don't know, might be with the restriction that nothing should be done. But I don't, I don't believe, and I never did believe, that all the school billings down on Paul Lane Street, there were many, and I saw many building built, they were never considered as part of the business district. They were school billings in an area that had no effect on what you developed in the center. And that's the right idea of what I think Building 3, I mean, the middle school that is empty now falls into that corridor. And if it's all possible, I think you should seriously look into and try to see at least, what is it worth? There are such things, because I was in the construction business, such things as preliminary estimates, which if you call on someone that knows you reliable, say, "Look, we'd like to really know what this structure is worth, and if it can be done." And quite frankly, telling him it's nothing but a preliminary, and if it's mortified and it makes sense, then you open it up to what we call a bidding process. So, all I can say is, this is a good meeting, my day's well over, but I'm still going to have a few words to say. Goodbye.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Peter?
I want to thank everybody for coming. I am also, like Michael, going to be recusing myself from the vote on this, but I'd be remiss in this public hearing if I wasn't able to make my thoughts about the situation clear. I want to say right off the bat that I see these two petitions as conflicting. The fact that the second petition would be a major change to our zone, I think the zoning in the center would be in direct conflict with the petition asking us to wait before we change the zoning plan. But what I do see this as is an opportunity to perfect our zoning plan down the center, like Mr. Riley said, and address the concerns of the residents. I agree in substance that we should have permanent, full-time, long-term staff in place before, before we do move on major projects. However, I believe that tying the hands of the Council with zero qualifications as to any movement may not also be wise. Further, I question the notion that this Council has the ability, save a charter change, to stop itself prospectively from carrying out its duties. I agree that it's not practice, it's not good practice to act without the full-time manager and planner in place, but I think that that argument should go to the merits of any decision that we were to make, and should, we should not attempt to buy ourselves for making them in the first place. As to the petition aimed at changing the zoning down the center, I think we need to look at the zoning and make the changes once we have the Town Manager and Planner in place, which I think is what both sides are looking to do here. So, I've reserved a room at the E.V. Newton next week, so we can take our, some ideas that people might have from the community and make some changes. That's Wednesday at 6 o'clock. I hope to see you there. I agree with just about all of the Planning Board's recommendations, and that we should build, the first one being that we should build off of the Town Manager's memo that he drafted this winter, to better identify with specificity the parcels where, where the lines in the center are drawn, and this will help the neighborhood visualize exactly what is allowable on each parcel of land. When the Town Hall staff set out to identify the boundaries of these, this past winter in the CBD, they went pat through about 100 years of town meeting minutes and many old maps. And while I'm certain that the work was done with the utmost professionalism and attention to detail, it is my recommendation that the Council or the town should hire a surveyor to draft what we know the boundary of the CBD is and pass it in the form of a motion. This would clarify any lasting questions about the zone and guide us against costly litigation that might ensue after something has been approved. This will also take some of the stress off the neighbors who remain unsure about where the property lies in our rather ambiguous zoning plan. I also agree with the Planning Board's recommendation that we look at the payments and move parking aspect of the zoning plan, which was adopted in 2014. The amounts should certainly be raised, the allowable uses of the fund should be expanded, and we should look into ways that it can become a long-term revenue source for the town rather than a relatively small, one-time payment. The signers of both of these petitions make very good points, and I hope that the Council can work to address the concerns of the signers of both of these petitions. I do not think that we can meet the needs of the community by passing one of these or both. I hope that the town goes back to the Drawing Board, and we can attempt to learn from the past and form a better policy that works for everybody. And I look forward to this conversation.
Does anyone else wish to be heard?
Steve, I'm Precinct 6. I want to thank Councilor Lozardo and Councilor Christopher recusing themselves, and I want to encourage anybody else in the Council who might have a financial interest in the Center Business District also to recuse themselves before we get to voting time. I also want to say that from my time in Somerville, my time in Cambridge on the Planning Board, my time in Medford with their Planning Board, I will say that zoning changes by petition, petition can be extremely dangerous and permanent and very difficult, very difficult to reverse once in place. We, not knowing anybody who signed that petition, I find it highly likely that there were any active, serious, contemporary urban planners that were behind the drafting of that. I think it's completely unrealistic to have a uniform, a uniform, a uniform zoning code from a residential into a business district. I think two and a half stories is, is short-sighted. I think that the setbacks are unrealistic given the existing architecture, and I think that even .75 parking space requirement is too, is too high in a Center Business District. I'd like to see that dropped. Okay? That's fine, that's fine. I, I just, and also, when we're looking back over 100 years of zoning, of zoning changes and zoning law that's been written, we also never had a contemporary urban planner involved in any of those changes either. So, we're on, we're on a really long history of short-sighted, short-sighted decisions, and I think that by, by stopping making any, any further decisions until we have an expert in place, I think we'd be in a much better place for the future. I just don't want to handcuff, handcuff future generations that have to live in this town for, for the current, the current sentiment in the world. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Joel, Precinct 5. If I could suggest a conflict of interest issue, it might be very different for the two motions that are under consideration. For the first one, which is to ask that there be a delay before we go into rezoning and implementation of Center Business District, I can't imagine that there's, I, I'm in all sorts of conflicts of interest in my life, so I see them all the time, I'm not a lawyer. I can't imagine that there is a conflict of interest. I know there's a number of lawyers on the board. On the second one, there may be some conflict of interest. So, I, we just asked that people parse out the one petition versus the second petition. On the, sort of the conversation of where we are, I'd very much like to harken back to Tom Riley's notion. I don't think that there is anybody in this room or in this town who doesn't think that the fine work that has been done on the rezoning needs to be retinked with. I think, well, Carroll pointed out a number of issues that we probably want to revisit. I do believe that citizens are very, very busy all the time, and probably despite the best efforts of folks to do community outreach, a lot of people weren't aware. I think that the energy that is here today is terrific. I think if you can find a way to reposition this, maybe in 60 days after you bring on a new Town Manager, start a thoughtful process about rezoning, I can't imagine that anybody is disagreeing with that intent. So, as you think about the, the Planning Board recommendations in the two motions before you, I would hope you would capture the mood of the audience, which I, I think there's a lot of consensus around. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Charles Scott, Precinct 6. I'm a long-term resident of the town of Winthrop. I listened to the presentation about the parking in the, in the downtown, and how many spaces are available, and, you know, there should be plenty of parking, may not be closed. But I think the telling point is, is when you closed temporarily that Hagman parking lot, the reaction that you got should tell you something, okay? All right? I think there's something wrong with the methodology of how, of how the, the parking issue was studied. Something's wrong, and if you go in the direction you're going with trying to increase, you know, the, you know, the density, you know, without providing parking, you're asking for trouble. I think the idea that charging $2,000 to let the developer off the hook with regard to parking is ridiculous, okay? If you were to have, you know, by analogy, I mean, this is dealing with a real problem, okay? This parking, I mean, the $2,000, what does that, you know, do for you? I mean, I think putting signs up, that's like putting lipstick on a pig. I mean, this is not going to create parking spaces. By analogy, you have a leash law in the town. What would you say if you, if a resident paid $100 and said, "Okay, now, I'm going to pay $100, and I don't have to obey the leash law." We'll, we'll put signs up, you know, beware of owners with dogs who don't have leashes. Would you let, would you let them off the hook? I mean, that's dealing with a real problem. Putting signs up isn't going to help you. When you look at the list of towns that were being compared, coastal towns, I think the residents of Winthrop would much prefer to be associated with Marblehead, Swambska, Situit, Cohasset, rather than Lynn, Chelsea, Revere, and other towns like that, that have high-density, you know, areas with parking problems. Winthrop is a jewel. It doesn't have those downtown kinds of problems. We do need some development. I mean, there's no, there's no mistaking that there are areas of the downtown part of Winthrop that really need help. But, you know, but putting high, high-density development with no parking is not the way to go.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Anna Bacos, I'm from Precinct 5. And first, before I speak, Mr. Riley, I am appalled, and my heart is saddened at their borne behavior. Thank you for being Town Council and for all your efforts now going forward to bring open communication back regarding the Center Business District. We all know how important this project is, but what's even more important is that it's done well, and that the right foundation is laid so that anything built upon it will last and thrive, and that you have a plan to ensure our safety and well-being throughout this process. My family settled in Winthrop in the 1920s. My dad, and I know I've said this before, used his meager military wages to buy the home that we've lived in since 1947. Once again, I am employing his memory and name and furtherance of my goal to convince you to more thoughtfully consider the impact of the many aspects of this plan and just how it may adversely affect our fellow residents and beautiful town. One of the most important lessons my dad taught me, which I carry throughout my personal and professional life, is that for anything to be done well, to last and thrive, you must start with a proper foundation. He always said, "You need to do it correctly from the beginning, or don't do it at all." He always precisely created a plan before doing anything, and he carried it through to a T. Based on this, I ask you to moderate your focus, to reconsider the various elements of the plan, and ensure that this plan is for the betterment of everyone, and again, not for a select few who stand to profit greatly at our expense, and that it will be built on a solid and secure foundation so that anything established upon it or surrounding it will last and thrive. Why do it if this is not going to happen? Our concerns and goals surrounding this project remain the same. They're not changing, even after everyone's presentation. We want to maintain or improve our quality of life. We want to ease the parking challenges that we continuously face, and we are concerned about the resident's safety over the long-term effect of this rezoning and project that's being considered. We all agree that the buildings and infrastructure, blockways and roadways in and around the center are in need of refurbishing. But let's be honest, we're all in this predicament because of some bad choices that were made along the way, whether controllable or not. For whatever reason, the buildings and roadways and blockways have been allowed to become rundown, and now, as a result, we're faced with a huge public safety and health concern when the project begins, let alone the costs associated with it. In my previous statement, I stated that our home and the homes of others are severely impacted by your decisions, as well as what happens to them in this plan now and in the future. Now, I'm adding to that in saying that it's not only our homes, but our lives that will also be affected by this project. I ask for you to now be more open and transparent and share with us your plans to control and alleviate the public safety and health concerns that will be exacerbated by this project. So, in closing, I leave you with this. What will you do to keep us safe during this project and going forward? And once the project is completed, what are your plans to maintain, repair, restore each of the existing structures that you so carefully built so that we will not find ourselves in a similar situation in the years ahead? Thank you for your time and for hearing me. I wish you a good night.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi. My name is Phyllis Hargreaves. I'm from Precinct 5. At one of the very early meetings that we had at the Harvey Room, a New York developer said how much she loved Winthrop. Has she submitted any plans yet for that old Family Dollar building? And if we put a stop on all further things, can she refute that if she wanted to start developing that property?
I don't like to answer questions because we can, this meeting can go on for tons of time, but in that particular case, it is part of the infrastructure project down the center that would make her or allow her to do some type of development. Until we get the center, all the infrastructure improvements in place, nothing can go forward.
Okay, so she can't do anything. Okay.
Thank you very much. Lisa Albergini, Precinct 6. I just wanted to thank the Town Council and the Planning Board. I thought that this has been a really helpful meeting, and there was a great presentation that was really thoughtful, helpful. It detailed the incredible process that the Town Council and the Planning Board, the ordinance committee, you know, went through before, so I really want to thank you all for that. Good information was presented on zoning, the process, parking. That said, I think everyone, as Joe said and as Mr. Riley has said, everyone knows that there's always room for some improvement, right? And for more discussion and some adjustments that can be made to the current zoning, I'd like to make just a couple of observations. One is that certainly the map should get published, one of the Planning Board's recommendations. I think many residents aren't clear on what really, what is in the zone, the zoning code and what it means. There are room, as I said, for adjustments. Nobody at the moment is thinking that we should keep $2,000 in lieu of, as a payment in lieu of parking. So I think we, several people have said that tonight. We know that should be studied, it will be studied, it can be adjusted. There are other things that should be as well. And I think it would be great, for example, to have a session on what tasteful development that could take place within this code would look like. We were talking about that at the Planning Board. Let's have a couple of sessions, education sessions, what could be built and what would that look like, and how can we shape that. So I think there were some really, really positive recommendations and thoughts coming out of it. I thought the last Planning Board meeting was incredibly productive. So I think the question really is simply, where do we go from here? I was involved in the first petition. Clearly, I think we should hire a town manager, educate that person on the zoning. Meanwhile, we can do some things. We can publish the map, we can hold a visualization kind of session, you know, and I would therefore, of course, urge Town Council not to adopt a second petition tonight, but to take measures to further the discussion when the town manager is hired, because I think we all want that, we all are saying that. I had good conversations with Donna Riley after the last meeting. We should talk about a parking management plan. There can be resident parking only on some streets if it's a real problem for residents in the downtown. You know, there are good, productive measures that we can undertake. So I would suggest that we, again, not make these decisions until the town manager is hired, but then really further that discussion. And one other thought that Joe and I were just talking about, we should also have a conversation about how to recapture value, right? We want economic development. We will be investing a lot as a town in the CBD. There may be developers who can benefit from that in the future, and we might want them to contribute back to a betterment fund of some sort. So there are a lot of good, you know, ideas and suggestions. I think that we need some time to do that thoughtfully. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Residents first.
Nick Seotis, Precinct 5. I'd like to first start off by saying some great things about Mr. Vecchia. Mr. Vecchia kept his word, and he kept his promise. We had a town-wide forum that was very well-attended, and we had some very positive dialogue. And Mr. Vecchia has been transparent, and I think the entire council now has learned from past mistakes. In December, the acting councillor, at the time Ross Sanford, publicly said in the transcript there were a lot of mistakes made. And the biggest mistake was that the neighbors, the residents, and the butters had no input into the ordinance changes. You cannot go forward without the people being represented. That's the problem that has taken place. In addition to that, I'd like to make a comment on the parking. The parking, we all know, is a serious problem. Going right down from the top of Somerset Ave, we have a new facility, state facility that's going in with less parking, I think it's at right around the 230 Pleasant Street. Those people that are going to be working that state facility, they'll be parking at the top of Somerset Avenue. We have the expansion of some businesses down the center. That expansion will bring in more cars to Cottage Park Road and Somerset Ave. Cottage Park Road, I'm going to be very explicit about this. You can only park on one side of the street. As Mrs. Riley said eloquently, there's three to five cars per house. Somerset Ave, the parking is tough on both sides. Going down further down the center, Bartlett Road, we know how difficult that is. Woodside Ave, it's full. Go up to Pleasant Street, 239 Pleasant Street, you have no parking there. Go to 249, 255, 265, okay? Go straight down Pleasant, you see people parking on their lawns. We have a serious parking problem, and we have to look at it in a very, very, almost microscopic way. In addition to that, some of the presentations on previous parking, they counted Nicks, which is 49 spots, okay? He's not going to make that public parking. Over at the other mall, they have signs up now where they're telling people who are not going to be shopping there. So I think it would be prudent if we get together with the neighbors, with the developers, and look at everything. I truly believe that some of the developers, one developer in particular, does have onsite parking, and he has been good with the neighbors, okay? I don't want to mention names. In addition to that, I got to give a compliment to Mr. Lucero and Mr. Christopher for coming forward and recusing themselves from this. I really thought that was very honorable, what they did tonight. However, I still believe that at one point, your constituents were not looked at. The Hagman Road thing blew up the whole thing because people seriously were impacting businesses. The Adams Street, the road trying to go both ways, Chief Del Hanty made the right decision keeping that one way. What's going on tonight is good dialogue. In addition to that, I want to say what happened to Mr. Riley and what happened to Mr. Driscoll from resigning from the board as town president is unacceptable in any community, any type of threat. We can be civil when we're not, whether we're pro-development or against development, but we have to be very civil about that. To me, this is very concerning. Ron, I hope you take this very serious, that any citizen in this town would be threatened, be it a phone call, be it a flat tire, or anything. And I want to just sum it up by saying the following. We need to sit down as a community. We're not obstructionist. We know we need development. However, it has to be development that will safeguard the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Since members are recusing themselves, is it a conflict of interest to have a business in the Center Business District and not recluse yourself?
That's correct. Did I see somebody getting up?
I lived here, I am living here for 63 years, and I live right in the center, right on Bartlett Road. I hate to tell you, we have a driveway. I hate to tell you how many people park in my driveway. We have a sign up there, private parking, they don't care. We have businesses down the center that had three to five cars every single day. They are parked from 8:00 in the morning all the way. Then we have people that go in the business, try to pack. People go to the bank, and they can't even find a spot to park. That's how bad the center is, right on Bartlett Road. Believe me, it's bad.
Johnny, Precinct 1. I'm sorry you took so much time, but I just want to, can you hear me now? The first recommendation from the Planning Board on publishing, you know, drawing up and creating the zoning and then publishing it, and they will do this in good faith. I have no problem with that. But as a process, I suggest that you go through the ordinance process and not just publish it. We've done that before. Our current zoning is from 1987, more than 30 years ago. We have a zoning map in 2006 that has no validity. I think residents need certainty as to what our zoning is. I think people who want to build deserve to have that kind of certainty, and I think it's in the best legal interest of the town to do that. The comments by Councilor Christopher about accurately delineating this, part of the problem with the 1987. A zoning map was approved, voted on unanimously, but could be interpreted differently by different people, and is in fact based upon a 1974 zoning that they just overlaid and traced it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't want to sound like a wet blanket. Dottie Genofrio, Precinct 4. When I moved here in 1998, the center, down the center, French Square, had a big, big parking lot problem, parking for the businesses as well as for the residents at that time. My question is, if we put a freeze on so many things and wait for the fairy godfather to arrive, as a town, I apologize, as a town manager, okay, are we not listening to the seriousness of the infrastructures and the seriousness of what has held back maybe developers even considering coming into the town? I think of Muffin Town. What an ideal spot that was. Is there anything really there? Did your friend, your developer friend ever come down and take a look at the middle school? I mean, we have all of these potentials, and it's not this big amount of money and tax relief that we're going to be looking at. We're going to be looking at a cosmetic change from the boarded-up on Summer Street, Summit Ave, okay, to a little development. There are not that many people that come into town to shop. Most of the people migrate out of the town, stop at the principal malls, and/or go online and do their shopping. So whatever's going down there is not going to be the wherewithal, though everybody's alleging this is going to be this phenomenal new town. I mean, with all due respect, I think we have to keep everything in moderation. We have to have good planning and design and advice, but I think one of the biggest things we have to do is address the infrastructure. Without fixing those pipes, we're not going to get anybody to pay attention. Now, my question is, when you get these permits for building, is that money that goes into a reserve fund, or can you say to a general contractor, when he gets through tearing up the street, is part and parcel of his building permit going toward fixing the roads or in that particular area where he was? Are we going to have this patchwork quilt all over town like we have right on Pleasant Street now, part here, part there? You know what I mean? Are we going to have some means of making the developer that does come in, is he going to take that responsibility and finish off his area when he's done? And is that money allowed in that permitting process? Is that considered?
Dottie, there's so many different variables, the size of the project, where the project is, you know, what the cost of the project is, because it's all based on the cost of the project as to how much the permit is. So in some cases, it's just minuscule.
Does that money go to the general fund, or does it go toward a project?
It goes into the general fund. It goes into the general fund. Anyone else wish to be heard on this particular article? Tommy?
I just want to make two observations quickly, because I know it's getting late. Zoning law in many instances talks about zoning enhancing and making compatible to surrounding districts. I think we want to keep that in mind when we're talking about what we're going to do down at the center in terms of all of the things we're talking about tonight. Second of all, I just have to say, I don't know the educational background of the people who signed the petition. I don't think many of them are going to get an invitation from MIT to join the faculty next year, but they're average citizens. Some of them are above-average citizens. Lots of them have dedicated their lives to different activities in this town. They're participants. They're neighbors. They have an interest in what goes on in the town, and they have a right to be heard, whether they have a high school diploma, grammar school, or a college degree. Yeah. The fact that they don't have a degree in urban planning doesn't negate their ability to sign the petition. down at the center in terms of all of the things we're talking about tonight. Second of all, I just have to say, I don't know the educational background of the people who signed the petition. I don't think many of them are going to get an invitation from MIT to join the faculty next year, but they're average citizens. Some of them are above-average citizens. Lots of them have dedicated their lives to different activities in this town. They're participants, they're neighbors, they have an interest in what goes on in the town, and they have a right to be heard, whether they have a high school diploma, grammar school, or a college degree. Yeah. The fact that they don't have a degree in urban planning doesn't negate their ability to sign the petition, to suggest that they didn't know what they're doing because they lack that credential is just preposterous.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close out this hearing. We have several other public hearings. The next one is the angle parking ordinance 10-16... excuse me, .16.080. I will refer to the Rules and Ordinance Committee Chair, Councilor Mark Corry.
The Rules and Ordinance Committee had a meeting last week.
Let me get that. Excuse me one second. At this particular point in time, I guess we can excuse the planning board, unless you're right and once you're all staying with us. We'll be here until after the 11 o'clock news, and then we'll try to watch the Late Show, but you know, then we'll auto in the P S. Thank you very much for attending tonight and all your work you've done on this project, both of these. Okay, Councilor Mark Corry.
I want to thank the planning board before they leave as well, and Bob Carroll, the outstanding judge we did, in showing all the work that went into putting that ordinance on the books. The Rules and Ordinance Committee met on June 13th at 7:00 PM and we reviewed a change to Section 1016.080, which is angle parking, and we voted to amend that ordinance by removing Section B. Should we add some quiet in the room? If you're going to talk, all side please. Section B of that ordinance allowed angle parking, not to read the entire thing, but it allowed angle parking in one spot in the town of Winthrop, and that was on Woodside Avenue and Bartlett Road where Cervices Marshalasura, at one time there was angle parking there. It's been gone for a while because of the road changes that we've done, so we've taken that Section B out that allowed that, and we made a recommended change that came from our traffic officer, Mike Del Luiso. And the new change that we're going to be recommending, so that you can discuss it in this open meeting, is to have angle parking in certain areas. And those areas are Bayview Avenue, a budding carfling park where there is now, Shirley Street, there is a specific handicap parking area, a budding Euro Beach, Veterans Road on the westerly side of the road, Kennedy Road in the Mark Municipal Parking Area from Overlook Drive northwesterly, on Cross Street, a budding Veterans Field from Franklin Street South to the high school, then from Franklin Street, Patson Street, Main Street. Those are all the streets surrounding the high school where there's angle parking going into the Little League fields at A, B, C, and D Field. All right? So those are the areas. And then again, around the tennis court on Main Street and on Ocean View Street, a budding the high school tennis court on that side, okay? Just so you know what it is at the public area, the ordinance will be read as it's passed later on in the meeting, of our public meeting, if anyone wants to ask or discuss questions about this.
That's my guy. Does anybody wish to be heard?
I have a quick question. When you change an ordinance, when Carol, Precinct Three, when you change an ordinance, do you not have to post it in public?
Yes. That's what we're doing.
Yes, you post it and you have the public hearing. That's what this is right now, is the public hearing. Because it was posted, there would be a public hearing on this.
It's changed.
Oh, but you don't have to advertise it?
We did. We do, we have to advertise it in the transcript.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
So I have a question. My name is Ruth Ashton, I'm in Precinct Five. So in front of Cervices, where everybody parks so they can see their child as they come out, you're eliminating that angle parking?
There was no angle parking, but there's still parallel parking down on every street there. There was no angle parking from the curb out.
So where that planter was, where they took out the planter, where everybody parks now, are you going to repaint the line so people can tell how, what the parking is like?
There is only room for one parking spot there in front of Cervices now.
I walk past there all the time, there's like four people, four cars.
There shouldn't be.
So are you going to enforce this or is just...
Once this is passed, it will be enforced. Right now, the books state there's still angle parking at Cervices, but there's not supposed to be since they've changed the road and the roads are too close to each other, because any car that's parked on the street is supposed to be 20 feet from a corner. So, and that's why we have all these signs that say no parking here, the corner. So there's only room for one car there without being 20 feet from either corner.
Okay, I don't park there, so I don't care. I just think you're going to have complaints. And I think if you don't paint lines, people aren't going to understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Councilor.
I'd just like to suggest that you look into keeping that angle park in front of Cervices. I know it was there years ago, then it wasn't there, and then when we moved the bench back, people started to park their angle parking, and it seemed like we were thinking, just consider that.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Jim Corkham, Precinct One. I just want to tell you about a nightmare we had two weeks back. The high school had their prom, and there was a wedding at the golf course. Can you imagine what that mess that was? A prom at the high school, there's three busses, and a wedding at the golf course. They were parked on the sidewalk, the grass, they were parked everywhere. And there was nobody in the spaces that were open. The spaces that were open that night was the cemetery. It's two ways, and nobody was in there. That's a nightmare.
There wasn't a wedding at the golf course.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close out that hearing. The next hearing, transfer $200,000 from the Water and Sewer Capital to the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund Emergency Sewer Repairs. I'll call on Finance Chair.
Finance Committee met this evening on this matter and recommended positive action and will be saying that in old business.
Anyone else wish to be heard on that transfer? Hearing none, I'll close out that hearing. Next hearing is transfer $99,802 from the MWI Assistance Unreserved Fund to the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Finance Committee met this evening on that matter and has recommended unanimously positive action on that matter and will be brought up in old business.
Anyone wish to be heard on that transfer? Hearing none, close out that. Transfer $68,900 from the Salary Reserve to the Department Budget Cost of Living Adjustments. Councilor?
Finance Committee also met this evening on that matter and with unanimous approval is going forward with positive recommendation under old business.
Anybody wish to be heard on that transfer? Hearing none, close that. The last one is a transfer of $56,200 from Salary Reserve to Police Department Budget Union Agreement signed. Councilor?
Finance Committee met this evening on that item and has recommended positive action unanimously and will discuss it under old business.
Anybody wish to be heard? Hearing none, that hearing's closed now. Public comment, general public comment.
Close comments.
Anybody wish to be heard?
John Stacey, Precinct Three. I saw you Monday up at Deer Island with a bunch of everybody up there. Can you give me an idea of what was going on? Is that a prelude to the meeting that's coming up on the 28th at the high school?
Doing my job. Doing my job, representing the people of Winthrop in the interest of the people of Winthrop. I can't tell you exactly what happened, but we have ongoing dialogue and there'll be a full report given on the meeting of the 28th.
Okay, great. The reason I'm up to is, just recently this weekend, I had a car smash into my house from speeding, probably we had one just out. And not only did it crash in my house, and God knows, home, but it went into the house and took up part of my foundation. So I think we need to really seriously think about this fishing pier and additional parking lot down there, that it's really not going to be positive for the residents down at the point, nor the people who are complaining about the parking now in front of their houses. Some say, well, let's add more parking and then there won't be any problem, but even if you add 40, 60, 80 more cars, they're still going to come. If you build it, they're going to come. So what we're looking to do is try and stop it altogether because we feel that they haven't dealt in good faith and earnestly about the security issue on Deer Island. There's no on-island rescue fire responders, God forbid someone has an attack on there, a crowd attack, there's no one there. If there's a police problem, they're 10 minutes away. So we need some sort of, I guess, recognition from Deer Island and the people that are going to put this, fishing game people are going to put this together, that we need an on-island annex with a combination of fire rescue and police annex to actively patrol the island and as well as keep order on the island, because we all know about the crime, the crimes, the drugs, the MS-13, all the stuff that's going on down there, and it's not being policed. So what I'm saying is, because they're not taking care of it now, adding more to what they have and still not taking care of it in an honest way, a call box is not an honest way. You need active onsite people as a deterrent and a proactive approach to this because many, many more people are going to be going down there. And I really think that you guys got to think about this enough to say, well, you know, people go fishing. Well, not many parks are open 24/7, 365, under state. This one will be. So who's going to be out there? Who's going to... Where's the lighting? Where's... I mean, I get on there every day and I take pictures of the trash area that's thrown all over the place. They're not... The fishermen aren't even picking up after themselves now. There's nobody there controlling, policing, and who's going to be the controlling authority? Is it going to be MWRA? Is it going to be fishing game? Is it going to be state police? Is it going to be Boston police? We need answers, Ron. We got to know, when something goes wrong, who's it going to be? Is it going to be the town of Winthrop? And one final other thing I'd like to talk about too, is the parking on the Winthrop side on that causeway, it has not been enforced. There's parking signs on there, there's not actually one sign on there, it's got a picture on there, it looks like the space for it, but it's really not, and it's a disgrace. And it should be taken down and should be taken, put a new one up there, a serious one, and it should be controlled and tagged. You know, people say, when it says no parking, you have to follow the rules. If you're going to have parking down there, you're either going to widen that street or turn them away, but you can't let them continually break the law and then, you know, your residents are going to call. They're parking in front of my house, they don't have resident stickers. Well, what do we do? So we need to, do we have to go to resident parking stickers with signs like they have in East Boston? Maybe we can do that, but I think the better thing to do right now is to keep the size of the parking lot that it's there right now and have the MWRA step forward and make a good faith gesture by, if it's them that's controlling this, start active police patrolling on that island, emergency rescue on that island. They're going to build a 250-foot pier, someone falls over, who's there to rescue? This is, you know, pretty much what we're going at. And we've been, we were supposed to have a meeting with MWRA in the beginning of the spring, and we felt like they were prolonging it to get it started and then have the meeting. And when we brought it to Ron's attention, he came to the PSA Hall and had a meeting with us and said he'd take care of it. And that was why I was asking you if there was any, you know, update that you could give us that the MWRA is...
We're in negotiations.
Okay, can we be a part of that too?
We're working very hard.
Can we be a part of that too, or is that just like...
I listened to what your residents at Point Shirley had to say, and I use that. That's what I use.
Okay.
Your concerns.
I guess we'll just wait till the 28th. I hope everybody will attend 7 o'clock at the new auditorium, and we'll just, I think it should be a town-wide, you know, input on it because, you know, it affects the point, but it still affects the rest of the town as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I would ask the Council, I don't know many of you in New, what we did back in the day was we argued with the MWRA because they were holding community meetings, i.e. with Quincy and other areas, and we said Winthrop was not having community meetings and we wanted them. And the fight was on, and they finally agreed that they would do two a year. They turned around and at the meeting, and I would ask you to take and keep this into mind, at the meeting, they were discussing trucking in the refuge from the different restaurants, and they had this complete program in place. We put up quite an argument, and at the next meeting, they came in, and the mistake they made was they talked about Charleston and the pier and the disco... I'm sorry, it's late. Considering the condition of the pier, that they were, they could barge over, they could truck over to Charleston, and they could use that pier and they could barge over, rather than coming over the roadway even more into Winthrop, bringing all of this refuge and working on it. And then all of a sudden, in the midst of all of this chaos and in the meetings, they brought up very briefly about, oh, well, we're looking into a pier, quote unquote, we're looking into a pier. We never got details of 250 extending out, all of the details, until after it had already been applied for through the, I've forgotten now the title, they went through Massachusetts, through the fishing games or however they did.
Department of Fisheries.
Okay, thank you. But by the same token, those plans were already being made over there in the corner, and here we are, thinking that we're over here attending a meeting, talking about trucking versus barging, and taking them in good faith that they're going to take this pier in Charleston, and they're going to look at, seriously look at it, which they never did. And that program is only on hold, you're going to get it later on down the road, because I find when you're talking and you attend these meetings, they hear you, but they've already had a predestined mindset. And I think it's because they throw a few dollars into the town and whoever on the Board of Selectmen made those last arrangements on the mediation fund, okay, sold the town shut. But I ask you to seriously consider, if you have any input as town council people and you care about your community, make sure you understand that we were not given on the ground floor up, we were told what was going to happen after it had already been prearranged.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Carol, Precinct Three. I am so sick of this pier issue. This is not what we signed up for. We did not sign up for Disney World down at Deer Island. They were going to have a treatment plan down there. Anybody ask the fishermen down there why they fish there? Because they don't need a license, there's no security. We asked them, why are you fishing there? Oh, we fish here all night, no one hears. We don't need a license. This is not what the town signed up for. Whenever the town goes in with mass water resources, they need to have a litigation lawyer in there. The town has given away all our goodies, you might as well say. There was supposed to be no trucks on our roads. The streets down Point Shirley are a mess. The curbstones are falling down. This guy, his wall's sinking because of the weight of the trucks. What are you going to do about it? You can't lay down and play dead. We want you to stand up for that community. That community is being crucified down there. That's it.
Anyone else? Jeff?
Thank you, Joel, Precinct Five. I'm here on the original reason I ever appeared before the Council, and I had... And I had said there I would continue to come because of my outrage over the lack of reaction from this board, this council, on the discrimination case that we suffered and subsequently now are ruling against us for unlawful termination. It's costing this town a lot of money. But more importantly, it is sending a very, very bad signal to this town. And I said that I would begin to read sections from the tawdry, tawdry behavior of our town officials that so far have not only gone unpunished, but because of the budget action we took last week, about to go rewarded. So the very same people who are involved in costing taxpayers money, which means we can't put sufficient dollars into the schools, into elderly programs, to public safety and other things, we're providing pay raises. I want to make sure you understand from a technical perspective, you have one more chance to get this right, okay? You voted a budget, but you can create an advisory vote to the interim town manager, who has no idea what he came into and is going to be gone in sixty days, to say, hold off on giving the salaries. The implementation of the salaries is at the discretion of the town manager. You don't direct pay raises, you allocate money for salaries. You don't direct pay raises. Directing pay raises by the town charter is the town manager. So I want you to put yourself in a position of, again, thinking about a daughter, a sister, a mother, who when finding herself in a situation where she feels she's been discriminated against, goes to another official who's supposed to be serving as a support person in the area of human resources to provide a fair hearing for that person, only to find that that person is compromised, doesn't report it, and yet we're providing a pay raise? If that were happening in the real world, which I might suggest is happening here, I think you'd sort of look at that movie and say, my goodness, this is incredible. How do we give a pay raise to that person? And then the person recommending the pay raise has a conflict of interest themselves because it was the temporary, different temporary town manager providing for pay raises for himself when he goes back to becoming a town manager. So this is an issue of ethics. This is an issue of communicating to the children and the women, the girls in this community about what your values are. I'm not a very religious person, okay? But did any people see the Pope Francis documentary? Okay, I did it because he's a fascinating person and again, not very religious. Recently, recently, he reversed course. You know the theory of infallibility of the Pope, right? Pope does make mistakes. That's church doctrine, right? I'm a Catholic, I'm not a good one. I'm actually an Episcopalian, which is even worse. This is what the Pope said. "I have, the infallible Pope, all of them infallible. I have made, quote, 'I have made serious errors of judgment and the perception of situation.' And he turned around and fired the bishop with chili." Okay? You have a choice. You have a value system. You can make a directive to the town manager that the town, temporary town manager, who certainly doesn't understand the fullest of the situation, be asked to refrain from pointing those, pay raises. And let me correct something else that happened. Temporary manager Delahanty said that if we don't give a pay raise to a certain individual, we're going to be subjected to a suit. I think you should look at performance first and pay for performance. You should look at all the facts. You should do an investigation. But I would urge you to delay the implementation of the raises. If you find that you can avoid them, you can pay for some other things here around this time. Thank you.
Anyone else who could be heard? There are none. We close out the public comment and we'll take a ten-minute recess. Committee reports, finance.
No, public correspondents, I think, missed.
Do we have correspondents?
Yes, I have two.
Okay, hire away.
Two correspondents I received, I think the council received one, and I apologize, I don't remember the lady's name, but she had a long eloquent letter about Winthrop Beach and about how we're losing the beach. And I just want to thank her for that letter and one hundred percent agree that it seems like the state spent upwards of twenty-eight to thirty million dollars and in the end, we're going to have less of a beach. And I'm not saying I'm not an environmentalist, but I'm not to the point of reducing the beach. Every year it gets less and less and less. And I for one would like to say, I don't even know who to ask or what to do, but I think it's incredibly, it's an incredible disservice to our community that we lose more and more and more of that beach to a species that's not on the endangered list. And I just think it's, I applaud her for the letter and I, and I would like to see if the council could do something to see if there's any restrictions we could place on how much of our beach we're going to continue to lose. Joe, that's the first correspondence.
I'd like to comment on as well because I did answer her email and she was looking to have a community meeting, have them come into Winthrop. I've learned in the past to have people under the commissioner come into Winthrop that just belongs any action. So we're in the process of inviting the DCR commissioner down for a site visit so he can see for himself exactly what's going on and listen to residents. That's something that I've been working on with the town manager.
Thank you so much. And on my second correspondence, and I waited for this because I thought this was the proper time. Under, I think councilor Lusardo, myself, and councilor Christopher sought opinions from the state ethics commission to make sure we were in accordance with the rules or what they perceive the rules to be and any votes concerning anything down the center. And I received correspondence from them about two weeks back stating that they felt that recusing yourself from any vote, whether it be infrastructure or, because I know Joe had brought it up earlier, which I kind of agree with, but the opinion that I received and I'm assuming the other councils received were, any vote regarding infrastructure or development, property owners should recuse themselves in the center business district. We do not, and I believe it goes for the other two councils as well. We do not need, the opinion was, we do not need to recuse ourselves on middle school development, but we do need to recuse ourselves on infrastructure projects in and around the center, in the center, and development projects within the center. So I would obviously be conforming with that correspondence. And that's all I have for correspondence.
All right, you can take over to finance committee.
Finance committee report meant, we discussed it in public comments meant this evening. I think there were nine items on the agenda. One item was withdrawn, the other eight moving forward with positive, positive recommendations. And we will discuss all of them in full business.
Thank you, Councilor. Rules and ordinance, councilor McCallum.
The rules and ordinance committee met on June thirteenth, two thousand and eight, seven P M. President, myself, his chairman, Heather Eggman, and Nick LaConte. We had a communication from Mike DeLuise, who is a traffic hearing officer here in the town of Winthrop. We had two things on the agenda. The first was the angle parking motion. And it was a motion to approve the angle parking motion. It was written by the traffic officer. That was made by Nick LaConte, seconded by Heather Eggman, and passed unanimously. That motion will be coming forward tonight. The second issue was a review of all rules of the town council. After much discussion and reading of the rules as posted, and I believe everyone got them, there was a motion by councilor LaConte to adopt certain changes which were voted upon in the meeting and to present them to the town council tonight for approval. That was seconded by Heather Eggman and that again was passed unanimously. We adjourned that motion at eight, I mean, that meeting at eight oh eight and we will be bringing forward both those motions tonight.
Thank you, Councilor. DPW committee, councilor McCaffrey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The DPW subcommittee met at the Hobby Room on the fourteenth at seven P M. Attended by councilor Lusardo and myself and about twenty members of the citizens committee to develop the dog park. The only issue on the agenda that evening was the dog park. Councilor Lusardo and I voted to submit a motion to the town council for approval of the location of the dog park, which we would like to submit a motion tonight. Located at the Kennedy Drive and looking to also utilize the remaining funds to submit a request for, for proposal to, with a consulting firm to review the quality of the land and the wetland delineation. The location is between the DPW storage yard and the entry road to the compost pile on Kennedy Drive. In addition, the group discussed ways to build a park based on research, online sites that they visited and also other towns' dog parks that they reviewed and visited for ideas. They've got some great ideas for LED compliance, green and ecological considerations. They have a lot of donations already in line. And they've done research on submitting for grants and funding elsewhere as well as fundraising. They've already raised a significant amount of money to get this started. I've spoken with a consulting firm, rented consultants, had the advice of DPW director Calla, and we're getting a proposal from them for a cost. This committee has done their homework and I'm happy to work with them and proud of what they've done so far. So going forward, we hope that the town council can move to this.
Okay, we'll have to take that motion under all business, okay?
Very good.
Thank you. Town manager review, I think I had mentioned that earlier in the evening. We do have three candidates finalists and that hopefully we're going to interview next week. We're in the process of trying to set up a schedule whereby the council will be in session specifically for interviews. It'll be public. We'll record it, but we will not play it back until we interview all three candidates. They'll all get the same question, but we won't let that thing be shown until everybody is completely had their review. This way it's fair, just in case, in case we have to go to two nights, one candidate may be able to see the questions. So we're working on a timeframe. Then the councils will get an email as soon as we try to control up the schedule, okay? Town managers' report. I think you might need a microphone.
I think I have one right here that they can hear me.
Everybody here, okay?
Yep. Yep. So the Deer Island Fish Pier Community Meeting is at the Winthrop High School on June twenty-eighth at seven P M., which we've talked about. The Millerfield Public Use Schedule, there's a meeting for next week and the goal is to have it open for the public in July first. The town audit, which is something that people have inquired about for June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, was delivered last week, late last week, and I spent part of last night in the ring reading it. I would expect to finalize it hopefully in July and get it to the council hopefully by the end of July. Reminder to all residents of no dogs on the beach ordinance. We did get a grant award of sixty-five thousand for the geodivation program, which will allow us to hire social work services for that program. And I've asked our assistant town manager to come and speak tonight about the line bike launch. Joe?
Hi, I'm coming over mic.
That'd be great.
Good evening, thanks. Just wanted to kind of give you an update on how the line bike process rolled out. I'm sure you're aware that we have been working with M A P C for several months on procurement and the winning bidders were line bike and spin. We had spent a period of time going back and forth with so far a line bike on a statement of work that is a part of the master contract that M A P C signed with them. We signed the statement of work on Thursday of last week. They issued a press release that we distributed through the town website, the town manager blogs, email, and did our best to get the word out when the bikes started to roll out Friday. We do expect kind of a period of education for the riders. The bikes are generally left at thirty-two dedicated hotspots by line bike. And as they're used, they may be left by the people who ride them. They're supposed to be parked properly and they get recalibrated back to those hotspots if they're not being picked up by other line bike riders. We're working with line bike to try to make sure that people get the right education on the proper way to park a bike. They have these handy, handy flyers that they've circulated. We've left them several in different places and we'll print out more. We've got it available on the town website. And for people who find line bikes improperly parked, perhaps on their property or leaning against a building or something, you can report to line bike either by using their app or calling their call center twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week at eight eight eight, line three forty-five. The idea here for us was to allow line bike and perhaps spin if they have signed S W, to come in and operate and see if this is, this is well worth to them. It puts no liability on the town. It puts no responsibility on the town. We don't pay them, they don't pay us. Other bike share options that have been looked at in the past were required significantly for a cost on the power municipality and we're trying to avoid that. We're one of fourteen communities in the M A P C region that were part of the procurement. And if you have any questions to things that I didn't hit, I'm happy to answer.
Councilor McCallum.
Do we have any control over where they put these bikes? Because just driving around town, seeing some of the bikes that were on Pleasant Street, like three bikes, they seem to be blocking the sidewalk. I mean, I think the bikes are a great idea. I like the ones that have the park at the landing, at the beaches. But some of the ones in the middle of town in different places are just out on the sidewalk. Like Dubby's Corner and down on Pleasant Street near the Atlantis Marina, and they seem to be blocking the sidewalk.
So that kind of gets a kind of two issues that I alluded to, but I guess I didn't explain it. We designated thirty-two spots and we did that through a collaboration between line bike. They originally can't do so with about twenty or so spots that they identified. We were driving around town looking at kind of areas of high traffic. We ran that list by the transportation advisor committee and Julie Walsh approved. And they, we met, actually Julie and I and one of the other members of the committee met with the gentleman from line bike. We went over those spots and made some suggestions on other spots and expanded the list out to about thirty-two. When line bike comes into town, we're pretty much in a debate as to recalibrate. They grab the bikes from the less traveled areas and put them back in those hotspots. Those are the only places line bike can leave bike. The other end of the equation is their users need to be educated to park the bikes properly. That's why the flyers were, and they send out email, once you've downloaded the app, they send out email reminders and things to their riders of make sure you park the bike properly. They do have a way of track which users have which bikes and so on. They have, we may be able to get them to kind of touch back to people who they see repeatedly leaving bikes where they're becoming a problem. But the idea is to get people to park the bikes right way, not driving into the sidewalk, certainly not in the middle of the street, on private property, not leaning against a building. But on the sidewalk, you know, one bike kind of parallels the sidewalk in a way that it doesn't strike a passage is a right way to park a bike process. The users also are kind of conditioned to park the bike properly because if you, for instance, just leave the bike over on its side and you don't block the bike at one point, then it keeps charging. So, you know, eventually they're going to start paying the charges for leaving the bike parked improperly. So we're working with them. Our bike has seen this in other communities. It usually takes a week or so for everybody to kind of get on the program and then they notice the dramatic drop in, you know, amount of complaints and a lot of issues that have come out when people move bikes home. We're hoping that the fall is going to happen.
Councilor?
Will they eventually be having a bike rack situation? Like in other cities and towns, I see specific spots for them, so that's one question. And the second question is, is there a time of year that they take the bikes, like October and November?
So our current state is going to work within months until the first week of summer this year and then it goes away. If they want to come back again next year, they have to sign a new statement of work with us. If they want to come back next year, we've already indicated to them that we would also be asking them for one dollar per bike, per month charge that we could put into a fee, into a fund that would allow us to fund bike infrastructure groups, more bike racks, more signage, things that would help people who were using the bikes do it more safely. And that would be a way for us to kind of make some of those improvements without impacting the general fund. The, as far as, remind me, first question.
So the bike, I believe there's three hundred bikes, is that accurate?
They're allowed to go up to three hundred bikes. Their initial launch was about a hundred and fifty. They'll go up or down based on They'll go up or down based on the amount of users, they don't want their bikes here that aren't being used or something.
It just, it seems like a great program, but I, you know, you look at East Boston and other cities and there are specific spots for the bikes, and I just think, you know, high winds or either on the ocean.
The issue with the dock system, which is what the Blue Bikes, it used to be called Hubway, now it's called Blue Bikes in Austin, is there's a huge capital expenditure involved in that. Each one of those stations holds 10 bikes, each 10 bike dock costs $60,000. And the municipality shares that. So in the city of Boston and Cambridge, they have the Blue Bikes, they pay for that by getting major corporate sponsors to pay for the infrastructure. We don't have any corporate sponsors. We talked to Hubway years ago before they became Blue Bikes, they weren't going to adjust their fee for us, they still wanted us to pay $60,000 per dock. So that was a nonstarter, obviously from our perspective, we didn't pursue that. We did pursue another dock system from a company known as Zaxter. Theirs was cheaper, but it wasn't a lot cheaper, and in the end of the day, at least with Blue Bikes, the city of Boston buys the equipment, they own the docks and all the bikes. So at the end of the day, if they have trouble with the operator, they can always find a new operator and they keep the equipment. The other company, Zaxter, it's just a leasing arrangement. So it only costs $20,000, but at the end of the year, they take the bikes away and you might not get them back. So again, that wasn't a good offer for us. So when the dockless technology started to evolve and come out and it started to be released in Revere and Malden last year, we began to meet with MAPC, understanding that these bikes were going to impact us whether we were on board or not, because what Malden or Revere soon realized was that they were getting complaints from Chelsea and Everett and Melrose, that the bikes that they had allowed would show up in their communities and their communities didn't have a relationship with the bike share company. So by doing the joint procurement, the regional joint procurement with MAPC, we sought to kind of create a network where communities sharing borders largely in a certain geographical area would have the same companies. It would prohibit other companies from coming in and it would give us a direct contact with the bike share company. In this case, right now, it's Line Bike, MAPC, Spin, because they are one of the two winning bidders for MAPC. They haven't signed any SOWs yet. So we're not sure how ready they are to perform, but we're trying to talk about it.
So Joe, we have Line Bike in Winthrop, they have Line Bike in Revere. Now, I know the city of Boston has an agreement with a different company.
Yeah.
However, we do have, anybody that takes a Line Bike in Winthrop and wants to drive to Orient Heights, they can leave it on MBTA property. Is that correct?
So yeah, so we had, MAPC did involve MBTA in discussions as well. So Boston and Cambridge have an exclusive agreement with Blue Bikes, had that on way down with Blue Bikes. That company is very seriously guarding that exclusive agreement. If our bikes show up in the city of Boston, the city of Boston is being required to call Line Bike and get them to move the bike. Again, it has no impact on us, it's an issue for Line Bike to deal with with the city of Boston. But the MBTA property is not subject to the Boston exclusivity here. So people in the town of Winthrop, if the city of Revere want to ride the Line Bikes, if they park them on MBTA property, legally on MBTA property, and not leaning somewhere where it obstructs a pathway, if they park it legally on MBTA property, the city of Boston won't block them up and the MBTA will allow them to be there. According to the folks at Line Bike, they are working on a more formal agreement with the MBTA, but they haven't gotten there yet.
Any other questions? Yes.
Just two questions. Is there an age limit as to the ridership? I mean, if a family came in with children and they decided they're going to rent three or four bikes and take a ride around?
I don't, I don't believe there's an age limit. That wasn't a question we asked at the end of the size of the bikes, if they're prohibited children under a certain age. It's just, it's just not strong enough to handle a bike that size.
Okay, and what about helmets? Is there any requirement to wear a helmet?
There is no requirement for helmets. We don't, again, it's not, there's no liability on us, we make sure that the statement of work with Line Bike protects the town of Winthrop. We're not saying that we're endorsing Line Bike or Spin or any of that, we're saying we're letting them work under these rules. It's up to them to make sure all the realities are taken care of.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other questions? Thanks, Joe. That's it? School department update. We had a school committee meeting last night, it was a 45-minute event, and the school committee approved the budget, the bottom-line budget. There was discussion relative to changes within the school department budget. We know that the finance commission of the school department will be holding a public meeting within the next week or so to discuss any changes they may want to recommend. In addition to that, there was a long discussion relative to opening Miller Field to the public. As you all know, we made a commitment to the voters of Winthrop when they passed the override of that exclusion, that they would be public access. We're in the process of putting together a program. They somewhat put a program together by the Buildings and Rounds Committee and the Athletic Subcommittee, but the serious discussion will take place on June 28th, as the town manager mentioned, with the school superintendent, so they will have same type of a program. And that was it. Okay, we're back to square one, folks. Old business. Two petitions that we discussed earlier in the evening. I'll open it up to discussion. Anybody wish to be heard?
I have a question, Council President. I'm a little uncertain about exactly what's going on with the parking spot being able to be bought out for $2,000, and I was hoping for some clarification from someone in the room that may know more than me. What exactly does that mean and what are the facts?
As part of the code, a developer comes in and their proposed project requires a certain number of parking, and they do not have that number of parking. They're allowed to purchase bad spots for $2,000 to $5,000. So they would get, they would get basically a variance from that requirement. The money is supposed to then go to fund the town to then decide what it's going to do to alleviate the parking difficulties. There is some question as to how we're going to implement that and whether or not the $2,000 is reasonable, and that's why one of our suggestions was, the council was that you would consider getting some understands of that problem professionally to make recommendations to both the law board and the county. That's what our recommendation is.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Well, if maybe one should be heard.
Who is this one? Is it the Center Business Zone?
Yeah, it's the council.
You're doing first.
Either one. Comment on either one.
I'm going to suggest that we vote no on both of these. And still much of Peter's argument is that why are we going to hand up ourselves from taking any action when we should be taking actions on certain things? These petitions that these people have put forward to us have enlightened me at least, and hopefully all of us, on some of the issues that they have. Now that they've informed us of some of the issues, let us go forward and correct them and not have to be told, you know, exactly how to correct them. I think that we have the ability to correct these things ourselves. I could see a change in the $2,000 ordinance coming, I could see a change taking place in the next probably two meetings where we could actually draw a map, make it part of an ordinance that would show what the Center Business District area is. I think a lot of people got enlightened tonight that didn't know before tonight that there is a buffer zone and that if you are with, next to a residential lake, you can only walk two and a half. I think everybody's not thinking for four feet right there. But there was a buffer zone in the initial, you know, plans that we did, well, we did pass it, but it didn't come from MAPC and when it came from the planning board, there were buffer zones, there was concern about what the neighbors could see. They did have opportunities to come to numerous meetings and everything was posted before anything was voted, like it always is. So, you know, they didn't, just because they didn't see it doesn't mean it wasn't done and it was done, and there was plenty of knowledge given. But of course, let's alleviate their fears, and I think we can change some of the fears that those people have if we can act. But if we can't act on anything, we can't fix anything for the next two or three months, which doesn't make any sense to me. I think there is a lot of problem with the way the petitions were written. When a petition is written and they say to us, you should not take any action on a major project or, you know, on a significant project. Who is it determining wants a major project, who wants a significant project? I mean, there's no definition to that. So we're determined. It makes no sense to vote on either of these positions favorably, but let us go on, and now that we've got people's concerns, correct them ourselves.
Anyone else with a dear?
Sure, thank you. I tend to agree with the recommendations that the planning board made. I think that makes a lot of sense. And to follow up on Mr. Riley's point, I don't think these two petitions are in conflict with each other. I think everybody is acknowledging that there are some things in the current zoning ordinance that need to be adjusted and improved upon. And I also think it makes sense to have a more thoughtful public process and make sure that we are getting the advice of a city planner or a town planner, as well as legal advice and all of that, rather than making major changes to our zoning based on a petition. So I would support that, you know, I would recommend that the town adopt the planning board recommendations at this point.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else wish to be heard? Well, I guess it's my turn. As your council president, ladies and gentlemen, we've been in this position, this new council, about five and a half, almost six months. And since I took over at the helm, we've had quite a ride. And I personally, you know, I, every once in a while, when I, when I get conflict, whether it's in the family or whether it's an issue that I'm involved with, I always like to step back away from it and kind of regroup as to where I'm going with this whole thing. And I feel the very same way with what we're going through right now in the town of Winthrop. I believe we have an obligation at this particular point in time. It's not going to be the end of the world by delaying and putting things on the shelf until we get a town manager in place and until we can get a bona fide, either a group come in or a town employee as a town manager. You know, there are various ways we can approach the town manager position. I just think we need to step back, take a look at where we're going. We certainly need, and I know that the town manager is already doing a complete study of everything that has to do with the center in terms of the financing of the program, all types of things that he's trying to address. So to not delay this thing, you know, because you think we're going to be the end of the world, listen, the school has been empty for six years, long before this council became a council and long before I came here. And, you know, it may be vacant for another two or three years as we proceed with infrastructure, you know, development or grant writing or whatever the case may be, for whatever we decide to do there. So I believe and I hope the council, someone will make a motion to at least pass the first petition, which is that the town council take no further major action on any significant town initiatives until a new permanent town manager and planner are in place. Now, let's put things in perspective. It may very well be that next Tuesday night, we're going to interview prospects, okay? The three candidates, the finalists. So it may very well be that sometime in August, we have a new town manager, at the latest, September 1st. That's what I projected all along, that it would be September 1st. We've already discussed, we've had informal discussions about a town planner and how we would finance it. Remember, the town council voted for a town planner, okay? And it may be a full-time town planner, or we may put it out to some company to come in and give us some guidance, give us a master plan for the whole town. Not a master plan just for the EB Newton School, excuse me, the middle school site of the center. I'm talking about a master plan for the whole town. You know, I look at Shirley Street, that's an area that I grew up, it hasn't changed in 50 years. We haven't even planted trees down there. We have one owner of property that goes from Delby's Corner all the way down to almost the yacht club. And look at the Highlands, that's probably one of the most vibrant areas, business areas in the town. We've got a parking lot thanks to DCR as a mitigation package when they re-nourished, you know, Shore Drive. Everybody else paid for it, what have we done? Go across the street, we haven't even planted a tree. So we need a town planner, or we need some type of planning for the town, long-term, a master plan, and then develop this plan and then go in increments as we proceed. There's many other areas in the center that are already ripe, you know, for development. So I would urge someone in the council to make a motion. If you don't, I'll put my gavel aside and make the motion myself, to adopt the town, the moratorium on moving ahead. That's all I have to say.
Is it possible to better define what they mean or what it is meant by significant? It just seems a little vague and it seems that it could limit...
Once again, Michael, we're talking a couple of months. We're not talking a couple of years, we're talking a couple of months. The town manager is going to be on board shortly. I would, I would hope that we have a town planner in place within the next six months. That's my, that's my goal. And I think if you look at significant, my terms of significant is a large project in the center, is the middle school site, that's what I think is significant. You know, doing the borings down in the center, which should be done anyway to find out what the hell is going on down there, that seems to be acceptable to me, and that's not considered a major question. So that's what I'm...
So, Council President, I'll make the...
I have to disagree with you.
That's fine.
And the reason I disagree with you is because it may take six months to get a planner, and we should be doing something with that school. I mean, we've had the Center Business District in effect since 2014. Not one person's come in and developed it. Not one person's even made an attempt to come in and develop it.
So that's going to change within the next six months?
No, that's not going to change. That's why we don't need to have a moratorium. We don't. I'd bet somebody comes in tomorrow and says, I'm going to give you $100 million for that school and you're not going to take it? Come on. I'm going to develop that school and I'm going to give the town $100 million because that's, I want that school.
What's the chances of that happening?
We're not going to be able to take it.
What's the chances of that happening?
Who knows? But why limit ourselves? I don't agree with limiting ourselves.
Council, please.
I'd like to make a motion if it's not as the appropriate time. I'd like to make a motion that the town council take no further major action on any significant town initiatives until a permanent town manager and town planner are in place and that, and that the significant initiatives would include the future use of the middle school site as well as zoning changes in the Center Business District.
A motion has been made. Wait here a second.
A second.
Second, Michael? Second, Michael, nothing. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, sir.
Now that we have a motion before, it says I stated before, I have to recuse myself and sit out the audience.
I'd like to do the same. At least an elbow.
Have you heard the discussion on the motion? No, it's none? Put it for a vote, roll call vote, please.
Council Raymond?
Yes.
Council Callow?
No.
Council McDubbs?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Mark Corrigan?
No.
Council McAdams?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could follow up just with one comment about a planner and why I think it is important that we get a planner on board to help with these important initiatives. And we've had this discussion before, but I just, for the public also, you know, the job of the planner is to work with the residents and the town government to look at how all of the pieces of the community fit together, and that's buildings and homes and parking and traffic and all of those pieces, so that we are moving forward towards shared community goals. And I think that, you know, having the right professional expertise on board for these important projects going forward would alleviate a lot of the concerns that residents are expressing tonight about, you know, density and parking and all of that, so.
Okay, with the passing of the... Okay, with the passing of the first petition, I guess the second petition is really included. Okay. Okay, under role of business, I will look to my finance committee chairman.
I'd like to make a motion that the town council vote to transfer $200,000 from water and store capital to Water Store Enterprise Fund to cover the costs related to emergency store repairs, or to take any other action relative thereto.
That's out of committee, doesn't need a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, is that a significant or meaningful transaction? If we can't do...
It's not a transaction involving anything in the center.
I'm sorry.
And, just to clarify this motion, this is a motion made for a repair that has already been done, and has already been paid for, and it's more of an accounting transfer, to transfer money from the capital to the enterprise fund itself. It's for repairs that were done on Washington Ave last year.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, please.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
I'd like to move that a motion, make a motion that I move the town council vote to appropriate $99,802 from the MWRA Assistance Unreserved Fund to Water Store Enterprise Fund to offset a portion of the anticipated deficit in the enterprise fund, and to close out fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Any discussion on the motion?
Council president, this is a fund, this is coming from a unreserved fund that's been sitting there for 15 years, that's been accumulating some interest, and the thought was to close out that fund and to put it to the Water Enterprise Fund to help the anticipated deficit.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
Motion that the town council transfer $75,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund to a new general fund special article for the purpose and equipping of a new truck for the DPW, or take any other action relative thereto.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Council president. I think the DPW certainly does need this truck. I think since we're sort of spending a lot of money here, it might make sense to kind of offer some accountability and transparency to Winter voters. So, I would like to make an amendment to this motion, please, and that is that the town council direct the town manager to provide a twice-yearly report listing the Department of Public Works' capital assets, the maintenance schedule of these assets, and documentation of all maintenance activities performed in the previous six-month period to the Town Council Subcommittee for Capital Assets by the last day of June and December of each year, beginning for the first time in December of 2018.
Do I hear a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Now, a discussion on the complete motion, of the amendment and the amendment.
If I may just sort of clarify, this is in order for us to get our heads around exactly what capital assets the Department of Public Works has, make sure that maintenance is sort of being done regularly, we have documentation for that, we keep a regular sort of eye, and make sure that we don't, aren't in a situation where we were before, where multiple trucks were all broke down at once, just so that we have that listing and are transparent to everyone in the public.
Counselors here. I think what Councilor LaCanti stated is well intentioned and a good idea. I do not think it's relevant in this motion, though. I think it's something that should come out of capital assets, and a request that is made to the DPW from the Capital Assets Subcommittee. I think it's a great idea, I just don't think it's appropriate for this motion.
Anyone else who should be heard? Hearing none, it will be on the motion with amendment.
No, you did amendment first.
Oh, I don't need to.
No, you made it.
Get laid. Okay, the motion is on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to the original motion saying aye?
No, roll call.
Roll call.
Can I just have a, just a point of clarification? Are we trying to put this in as a new rule, or how are we attaching?
We wanted to amend the motion with the transfer for the DPW.
And Councilor Christopher, if I could clarify, it's to direct the town manager, is the amendment, in order to provide this list twice a year.
Is that not per change to every department that has equipment?
Councilwoman Calhoun, it's my intention to sort of start here, since we're looking to pay for the DPW truck, and, you know, take it as necessary, potentially with future motions.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
I would just ask the counselor to amend his amendments, just to say only this one time. I think it's better for making a directive to just do it for once, so that six months down the line, maybe we can make another motion to do that. I just think to try to hold somebody accountable for something six months down the line by attaching, you know, amendment onto a capital finance request is a little much to ask. I think that we should make, if we want to make this a bi-yearly thing, maybe we make it in a separate motion with the counselor's permission. I'd ask that we only make this directive one time.
Councilor Christopher, I very much respect that position. I think there's a certain virtue to having a predictability with a regularly provided maintenance schedule. And just to clarify, this sort of would begin to take effect in December of 2018, so we're good six months away for the six months that we're about to approach. And then again, in June of next year would be for that previous six months, so there'd really be no actions necessary for six or seven months, and it would be of the previous six months of what the maintenance schedule is of the capital assets in the Department of Public Works.
Counselors here.
Again, I 100% agree with what Councilor LaCanti is asking for, I just think it's very convoluted in this motion. Does this mean we can't buy the truck until we have the capital? Because what if they do the truck, and then they don't do the plant? So, I just think it's a motion that should be made, totally separate from this, either come out of the Capital Assets Subcommittee, or come from the council itself on the new business at the next meeting, but I don't think it has any form in this motion.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
I was going to say, is there a compromise that could be struck of just moving that down into new business this time? Because I think it seems that the sentiment is that we would like to see this happen, but maybe it's just inappropriately attached to this particular motion. I do think that what you're bringing up is definitely something that we should be doing. Maybe it deserved to go online under new business as a compromise.
For the counselor?
I'd be happy to yield procedurally for it to go on, and withdraw my amendment for it to go on for new business next.
So, the motion has been removed?
Amendment.
The amendment has been moved, now it's on the main motion. Any further discussion?
Is it back to the main motion?
Yes.
Back to the main motion, with no amendments. Okay? Roll call, please.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
Move that the town council vote to transfer $68,900 from salary reserve to department budgets and enterprise funds as needed to cover the costs associated with the cost of living adjustments, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion comes out of committee, doesn't need a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, off for roll call.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
Motion I move the council, the town council vote to transfer $56,200 from salary reserve to the police department budget to cover the costs associated with the recently settled union agreement, or take any other action relative thereto.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
Motion I move that the town council vote to transfer $16,900 from salary reserve
to department budgets and enterprise funds as needed to cover the costs associated with recently settled union agreement, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion out of committee, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
Motion I move that the town council vote to transfer $10,219.14 from MWRA Supplemental
Inflation to Water Store Enterprise Fund to offset a portion of the anticipated deficit in the enterprise fund, and to close out fund.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tierney. Angle parking ordinance 10 dot 16 dot 080, I call on Councilor Boncori. Boncori?
The committee on rules and ordinance met Monday, and is proposing the following motion. Article B, upon the following streets or parts of streets which have been marked or signed for angle parking, vehicles shall be parked with one wheel within 12 inches of the curb, and at the angle to the curb indicated by such marks or official signs. The vehicles shall be parked so that all four wheels of the vehicle shall be placed wholly within the painted lines provided. Then it says Bayview Ave, marked parking area abutting in Parkland Park, Shirley Street, specified handicap parking area abutting near Old Beach, Veterans Road, westerly side of the road from point directly across from the property known as 81 Veterans Road, south to Hadasa Way, and westerly side of the road from the property line at 161 Veterans Road to the southern edge of Dog Play Rock. Kennedy Road, in the marked municipal parking area from Overlook Drive northwestally to where the curb curves and the road narrows. Cross Street, abutting Veterans Field from Franklin Street, south to the first marked crosswalk and abutting the high school tennis courts from Main Street to Ocean View Street. Franklin Street, abutting Veterans Field from Cross Street to Payson Street. Payson Street, abutting Veterans Field from Franklin Street southerly to the width of high school parking lot. Main Street, abutting the high school tennis courts from the easterly property line of 14 South Main Street to Cross Street. Ocean View Street, abutting the high school tennis courts from the easterly property line of 116 Ocean View Street to Cross Street. That is it.
Any discussion on the motion, please?
Counselor Boncori, I just have a quick question about this.
Yes.
Did this come as a recommendation from the police department in regards to safety of the people driving in the center?
Yes. This came from TSAC, and through TSAC, through TSAC to Michael Delariso, who is the actual person that, you know, is in charge of the ticketing and the parking violations, and to the committee.
Thank you.
Anyone else who should be heard? Counselors here.
Just see, under the parking violations and fines, it's a Schedule A, $100 fine, and then handicap parking violations, move to Schedule A, $100 fine.
Yeah, there's no change to those, those are not changed.
I'm just saying, is there, is that one and the same? I'm just wondering if there's any, I guess, more egregious to park in a handicap space versus just having a regular violation, that's what I'm trying to ask. There's no distinction between, I'm guessing, not following exactly the 12 inches away versus someone parking in a handicap space, which I know in some of the other ordinances with handicap parking, it's a $300 fine for parking. I'm just wondering if we wanted to make that uniform with the other penalties for parking in a handicap space.
Could you do that now, if this has been advertised?
No, this is advertised just for the angle parking.
It's fine to leave it there, I just wanted to point out, it seems that we might have a discrepancy as how we handle parking in a handicap spot. Everywhere else except for in the angle parking.
Council president, if I may, I think the parking violation fine was included on this page inadvertently.
Yes.
But I do agree with Councilor LaSoto, it would be worthwhile to take a fresh look at those ordinances as well.
Anyone else who should be heard? Do we need a roll call for this, as a chairman? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
Counselor Tierney.
I would like to add to that, and ask the town manager to instruct the DPW director that, the lady that we just really brought up a really good point, could we try to make sure that that is striped down in front of the seats, so it's clear?
Sure.
So, we'd have to put that to be done as soon as possible.
Okay, next item on old business is the good old dog.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman McDuffie.
On behalf of the citizens and the friends of the dog park, I would like to submit a motion. I'm sorry.
We can't do it at all.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the citizens and friends of the dog park, I would like to submit a motion to approve the location for construction of the dog park at Kennedy Drive, opposite the ball field between the DPW storage yard and the entry road to the compost facility.
Motion has been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Nick LaCanti. Discussion on the motion.
I...
Would you like?
No, I don't think I need that. No, I just don't think that that is, you know, the best location, just in regards to being a cemetery right there, and the children, the school, so I don't think that's the best location, so I'd be against that.
Anyone else who should be heard? Hearing none? Do we need a roll call in this, counsel?
I think we do it by amendment, just ying yang.
Let's do it, a roll call vote.
We don't need one.
I like roll calls. Put some mind on the spot.
Councilman Reiman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun?
No.
Councilwoman Christopher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
Yes.
Vice President Beckia?
Yes.
Motion passed. Just think, we're now getting to new business.
How about a motion to adjourn if you want to next week?
Do I entertain a motion to adjourn, to go on a special meeting next week?
For what?
I would like to make, no.
No?
Well, we're going to have a special meeting. I'd like to make two motions. One is that we suspend Rule 2A of the council for July, and eliminate the July 3 meeting, and have one meeting scheduled on July 17. That would be one motion.
Do I hear a motion, do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
I'd also like to make a motion that we suspend this meeting and add it to a special meeting to be held next Tuesday night at 6:30, to just finish this meeting, and then have a special meeting commencing at 7:00, for the sole purpose, the special meeting, the sole purpose are interviews with town manager candidates.
A motion has been made, do I hear a second?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, I couldn't quite hear.
The motion was to suspend the remainder of this meeting and to resume it on Tuesday evening, a week from tonight, at 6:30, and then have a special meeting of the council at 7:00 p.m. for the sole purpose of interviewing of the town manager candidates.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion.
Do it on Monday, the 25th rather, since it's a special meeting, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Would Monday work?
Council President, Monday does not work for me.
The reason I went to Tuesday, I'm trying to put the interviews, is because Tuesday is usually the night to meet, and I thought it would be easier. And I'd like to keep it that way. I know there might be some conflicts, but I think it's important, you know, hopefully in our lifetime, this is the only time manager we have to hire. So, it's an important meeting.
Have the candidates indicated that Tuesday is better for them?
We haven't got, we haven't got confirmation.
I was thinking that that might be a key piece, if we can get all of them on Tuesday, then that seems to make it obvious that we do it that day. They can't make Tuesday, but they can make Monday.
Well, I'm interested to make the motion either Monday or Tuesday, depending on the availability of the candidates. Do you think that amendment?
I would take that amendment. Is there an amendment, Nick, or, Council President?
Do you think that is an amendment?
Councilor Boncorry made an amendment, I will second the amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Council President, I can't make Monday, I have a standing commitment, I keep Tuesdays open for town business. I hope we do it on Tuesday.
Okay, how about Tuesday, Wednesday?
Well, there's an amendment for Monday, Tuesday, right now.
All right.
And I mean ideally, I think the plan would be ideally to do it on Tuesday. If they're only available on Monday, then we have that availability.
Yeah, but I, you know, not to have a council member...
Yeah, I think in fairness, it's got to be about the candidates. If the candidates can't make one of those days, then it's got to be the, we're going to lose someone. It's got to be based on the candidate's availability.
We will have an opportunity, if you're not there, if it turns out you're not there, you'll have an opportunity. I think I sent everybody a memo regarding questions that you would want to ask, so hopefully that will help. All right, so, let's move on the motion, the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment to the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
Which is why?
It's a Monday, it's Monday, it's depending on the year.
Okay? Do we have to put it down on that one? No? Okay. Now, we go back to the original motion, which was?
Which was, which is now going to be to suspend this meeting, the rest of this meeting, pick this meeting up at 6:30 on Monday or Tuesday, and then followed by a special council meeting at 7:00 for the sole purpose of interviewing the town manager candidates.
Any discussion on the main motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.